Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to begin. Thank you all, and welcome to the possible town council February 6th council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call, please?
Councillors Bede Bender, Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rapka City.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Lebec.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. And you are all aware that we are recording this meeting, both your voice and by video. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence.
Aye. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's keep in mind the people in China, that we can get ahead of the coronavirus, that it stays contained, and that we can get on top of it. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to have a public comment. So again, just a reminder, when you come up, if you haven't already signed in, we ask you to sign in. Your phone number is optional, that's just in case somebody wants to contact you from the council after the fact, if they think of something that might be pertinent to your observation and comment, that would be good. The other thing is, we've got a good crowd tonight, and that's awesome. And so, if you find that the person who has just spoken speaks to you, I mean, you took the time to come out here tonight, and I don't want you going home saying, "Oh, I wish I had spoken up, or I wish they knew what I was thinking." So we could do this one of two ways, anything is comfortable for you. But, so if the speaker comes up, I'm going to ask that if your talk is pretty much a duplicate of the other person's talk, or if you greatly favor what that person said, they spoke for you, I don't think it's bad that when the person stops talking, and goes back, that you can stand up to represent, "Yeah, I agree with that statement," or if you raise your hand, just so we get a feel that everybody's speaking and has an opportunity to express themselves, okay? So, and if you didn't sign up, you're still welcome to come, or if you get inspired, you're welcome to come up and speak, okay? So great. So we're now opening public comment.
Hi, my name is Steve Luciani from Centerville. I came here tonight with my son David to talk to you about a project that's very dear to my heart. That project is a war dog memorial to be situated in the Barnstable Dog Park on Finney's Lane. It'll be the only dog park on Cape Cod, war dog memorial, I mean, on Cape Cod. There are two war memorials for dogs in Massachusetts. There are 41 throughout the United States. Texas happens to have five of them. Now, when I mentioned this to the town council members, they said, "Why don't you go get some signatures?" And I have about 350 of them, that people, David and I stood at Dunkin' Donuts and Post Office last Friday and Saturday for a few hours, and got 350 signatures from people who liked the idea. I did find out that a lot of people don't know about war dogs or the war dog handlers. War dogs, since World War I, this memorial is going to be for war dogs from World War I up to the present time in Iraq and Afghanistan. It's a funny thing how the first war dog in World War I came about. There was a soldier in America who found a stray dog, he became attached to it, but he was going to be shipped out to France. He didn't want to leave the dog, so he smuggled the dog under his coat, went on the transport, got to Europe. His company liked the dog so much, they used him as a mascot. That dog was a pit bull terrier. He went into battle with these soldiers. He was gassed, and because he was gassed, he knew the smell of gas. And when he thought that they were going to have a gas attack, he would run through the trenches, barking to warn the troops about gas attacks. He would also go out into the field and lay down beside a wounded soldier until help arrived. He was decorated, he was the only dog to be promoted to a sergeant, and that's why he is called Sergeant Stubby. Right now, he is embalmed, after he died, he's embalmed in a Smithsonian Institute in Washington, along with his medals. There's another dog in World War II called Chip. You might have seen a movie about Chip. He was a shepherd, collie shepherd. He was engaged in many medals also, but on one mission, he was leading some troopers, and all of a sudden, a machine gun nest opened up from a pillbox, all the troopers hit the ground. The war dog had to let go of the leash, the dog, Chip, ran into that bunker, and a few seconds later, the enemy soldier came out of the bunker with a dog attached to his arm. So that bunker was taken. He later went on and helped capture 10 more soldiers. In World War, in Vietnam, between 1966 and '73, there were 5,000 war dogs. Unfortunately, 232 of those war dogs died, along with 295 of their handlers. Now, there are not only male war dogs, there are female war dog handlers. And then, you might have heard the movie Meg and Larry, Levy, Megan Levy. She's a war dog handler in Iraq with her dog Rex. Their job was to go around and sniff out IEDs. On one of the missions, she was told to go ahead on this road, there was a car up ahead, to investigate it. On the way, she stepped on an IED. Megan and her dog were blown 10 feet into the air. She got a traumatic brain injury, the dog got a hurt shoulder, and she got eardrum problems. Why she wasn't killed, they never knew until they found out that the IED was planted too far into the ground, and a concussion wasn't enough to kill them. She, when she retired in 2006, that's when it happened, she came back to the States, she wanted the dog to come home with her, but the government said, "No, you can't have the dog." She fought for six years to get that dog back with her. Finally, they agreed in 2012 to give her the dog. The dog was with her for eight months before the dog passed away in 2012, and Megan was holding the dog. Now, this is a small version of what I've designed, and Mackey Monuments will make this. This is going to be a three by five by three, I'm sorry, three foot tall.
Steve, you're going to have to wrap it up, okay?
Okay, granite monument, monument. It's going to be $45,000. I can get this through pledges, and I know I'll be able to raise those pledges, because there's many, many people on the Cape are interested in this. So, if there's any questions, I had more to talk about, but I'll cut it short. So, I'm hoping that the town, I already have money for it, but I don't want to put it in until we get the approval from the town. So, once I get the approval from the town, and I hope it can be fast, because I'd like to have it done for Memorial Day, if not, you'll have to be on Veterans Day. But I hope you can decide, because you have a lot of committees to go through, if we can get this approved. So, if you have any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
We're going to try to save you a little bit of time tonight, which we know you think is precious. I'm Heather Hunt, and I live in Ostraville. Just for transparency, my spouse is David Bogan. I don't speak for David Bogan, and he doesn't speak for me on this or any matter. In fact, he didn't know, he doesn't know what I'm about to say. You've heard me through 2019 speak on behalf of a resident group called Barnstable Watch. A few of them wanted to join me here tonight. So, the story goes that before zoning was invented, we relied on nuisance regulations as a society. Neighbors complained to some tribunal that had to sort it out, sort out the complaints, sort out the conduct, and make things right at some point down the road. At some point, we all said, government and citizens said, "Wait, this doesn't make a lot of sense, there's got to be a better way to do this." And zoning was invented. It allows like uses to be near each other in areas, and cuts down on complainers that have to go to either governments or courts to seek redress. We've relied on that since, and I think it's at risk now here in Barnstable in our residential neighborhoods. If you haven't read our residential zoning rules, cover to cover, I encourage you to take the time to do that. The rules here on residential zoning are deliberate, and they make great sense. Some areas are set aside for residential home use only, no commerce, no lodging, no B&amp;Bs, not even one-room rental. Other areas are permitted to have accommodations for transient guests, and rent rooms to unrelated persons. Some others are mixed use, it's very deliberate. If you read the rules and look at the maps, you will see the logic that this town has had over time to govern the use of homes and commerce, and lodging separately. Those zoning rules that are on the books today are responsible for the character of our villages, and the diversity of our homes, our neighborhoods, and our villages. We urge you to maintain that traditional diverse neighborhoods that Barnstable has grown into since its inception. So last month, town staff announced to the zoning subcommittee its recommendation to basically undo our residential zoning rules here in Barnstables, and allow transient vacationers in every home, in every neighborhood, in every village, every day, of every month, of every year. Investors could also flip homes in our residential neighborhoods into 365-day-a-year makeshift hotels. We call it mono-zoning. It's basically a return to the days of reliance on nuisance regs, when we can all sort of gather our complaints and go to a tribunal and seek redress. We don't believe it reflects resident feedback that you've heard along the way. President Hebert, we were very heartened to hear you say that this was sort of a first effort to put something on the table, to take a look at, and then really seriously examine it to reflect civic association feedback and resident feedback. You indicated that you want to look what has worked well in other communities, and you want to satisfy citizen concerns. We heard you, and we trust you, and we really look forward to working with you. To help you get there, we have put together short-term draft regulations for your consideration. We don't put them forward under the provision of state law that triggers a zoning consideration process at this time. We'd like to work with you on those regulations and moving them forward. Lucky for us, we're not the first, or even the 31st community to, coastal or tourist community, to work our way through this issue that has put residential neighborhoods across the country at risk. So we started with the Hamptons as our base. As you know, the Hamptons is right outside New York City, there are a lot of villages, a lot of second homeownership, and it had a lot of parallels to the Cape community. They also have housing issues similar to ours, and deep concern about quality of life. The Hamptons regulations are very strict. We have liberalized them dramatically to account for the traditional rental practices here on the Cape. I'm just going to give you a few of the highlights. We've passed out both a summary of those, as well as draft regulations, and they're currently posted at barnstablewatch.com as well. So just a few of the highlights in our proposal. Off-site investors would not be allowed to flip homes into hotels. We propose a three-month residency requirement to accommodate second home ownership and the number of people who spend a good amount of time out of region. Neighborhoods with no zoning, I'm sorry, with no commerce and no lodging would stay that way. Places that have summer cottage colonies would also not be forced to change. Home sharing, where room rentals are currently allowed, would be continued to do so, as long as the owners are present. Adult occupancy limits would also respect today's laws, with legal limits and ads required as a condition of the privilege of renting. I think that is especially important here in Barnstable, where over-stuffing short-term rentals has become practice. We invite people to turn, or we tolerate people to turn common spaces into bedrooms, and to pack bedrooms with beds. It is pervasive. Go to the web and, you know, consider the impact on our septic systems and our groundwater. I think that is especially acute in Barnstable compared to other communities. We've also include provisions to ease enforcement and reduce the need for police, to police headcounts of guests at 2:00 in the morning, or to rely on residents to have to do the same and report that to you. We're anxious to have a policy discussion with you about your preferences and the policy basis for them in connection with the rules. I think you have a choice here. One is a return to the days of complaining neighbors, have to collect evidence and bring it to the town and wait for resolution, and basically go back to the days of nuisance regulations before zoning was invented. That comes with the undoing of the diversity of our neighborhoods, our villages, and allowing investors to turn homes into profit centers. The other option is a path forward to preserve what we have today, which is diverse communities, diverse villages, diverse neighborhoods, that have as their core a reliance on zoning to have folks use similar, make similar use of homes and neighborhoods. We want you to choose the latter, and we want to work with you to get there to satisfy citizens and civic associations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, well done, well done. You met my wildest dreams, thank you very much. And so, I know that we went way over the three minutes, but your presentation was filled with information. You are the citizens. We are here for the citizens. It was a great presentation, thank you very much. Some of my colleagues most probably were not too happy with me, but if you look at the charter, the president has the authority to extend public comment and the amount of time allocated. So, I thank you for your wonderful presentation and how you did that. If every one of you had spoken for three minutes, we'd still be here for a while. So, thank you very much for that. Who would like to come up next? That's okay. Yes, thank you, welcome.
My name is Ann Roland. Do you want me to sign first?
Do have to sign in, though. Okay, thank you. The mic doesn't work unless you sign in.
Okay. Do you work now? Yes, I can hear it. As I said, my name is Ann Roland. I have lived here for 35 years. I moved here when my first child was very young, and it has been fabulous. We bought a house in Centerville, the kids went to school, we've got the most fabulous library system anywhere that I know of. We live down the street from the general store, the beach on one side, the kids love Sandy Neck when they were teenagers, there's Four Seas ice cream. It's fabulous here, and I have thoroughly enjoyed myself. I always thought I'd leave the Cape and go get an apartment in Boston, no way. My youngest, and her husband, and dog, and child, live down Cape in a very small house. The two of them work hard, they've been saving their money, they've been okayed for a good-sized mortgage. They are priced out of the market here in Barnstable. They are not able to buy a house here in this town. They would love to put the, you know, hopefully there's more kids, in the schools here in Barnstable. I would love to see that, obviously. They can move off Cape and find the house of their dreams, or not even of their dreams, but they need three bedrooms, and they want a nice yard, and a fenced-in yard, nothing outlandish, but they can't afford it. So what happens when we no longer can have our next generation live in this town? This town is just fabulous, with all the committees and the people that volunteer in this town, the historic, the waterways. We have so many different options in this town, and, you know, the water, the beaches, historic, it's fabulous. And we're pricing ourselves out of having the next generation in this town, plus, if the percentage of non-resident owners increases, I feel we're going to lose the climate and wonderfulness of this community. And let's think about that long-term. Because if a lot of the, you know, the seasonal owners, they like this, they maintain their properties on the whole, but I'm very concerned about the long-term continuation of this town as it is today. I think we're going to have a decline. I do understand that we need sewers, and that the Airbnb income would help, but at what cost? At what cost? And already, we've already done an initial sewer situation over at Stewart's Creek. I understand we have to do it again, because it's not right. A billion-dollar sewer project? That's frightening. And I don't have an answer for you, but I wonder if we could relook at this. And, you know, I believe in the Airbnbs with owners on site. I know several people that do this, and it runs beautifully, because the owner is there on the property. But the owner's not on the property? I live on Long Pond, and there's a house across the street from me, and they're off Cape. Last year, there was one time, and there's three bedrooms, 10 cars. 10 cars. I just don't think the Cape's going to survive well if we continue this with the Airbnb. But I'm sorry to say, I don't have a solution.
Laura Cronin, I did sign in, I was number three. I'm going to try not to repeat some of the things that we just said, but I too attended the zoning subcommittee prior to this meeting on the short-term rental, which was on the subject. And I do recognize that it was a draft that was presented, and however, I do think that, and I did speak there, that I thought that the draft fell short of what was the concerns that we heard from our civic associations, and I attended many of the civic associations that the town did attend and got feedback on. And I think the most important issue is the residential-only neighborhoods, and making sure that we protect those residential-only neighborhoods, and limiting the Airbnb or the bed-and-breakfast type of things. We have business-owned properties that are going into their neighborhoods, as you've heard. But the other thing that is a concern, and we discussed, is like, well, what happens when we have these influx of events and things like that? Where can people stay? But we have motels, hotels, bed-and-breakfasts right now, that need that business as well. So, opening up the entire town of Barnstable to this type of business, I think could be detrimental to the neighborhood and to the town. I think you'll wind up losing businesses instead of broadening what could be a potential by regulating it and zoning it in the areas where it should be zoned, and leaving the neighborhoods alone. It's very, it's really easy to go out and rent a house, because there's no restrictions on it. Even with the regulations, and even with the ordinances, the general ordinances you have, we know that they aren't always responded to. You can't keep calling the police because there's 10 cars parked in a three-bedroom home. That's just not what we need our police doing, and we don't want our neighbors doing that. We want to be able to create a business environment that people want to have business here, but we can also create business zones for people to have in their areas. So I would encourage the residents out there, if you have some issues and you want to know more about it, is to get involved. Your voice can be heard. There's the, next meeting is going to be on February 27th at 6:00 for the next short-term rental, so make sure that if you can't make the meeting, that you let your civic association leadership know, or your town council. And let your voices be heard, we want to be able to hear a good balance of it, because there are businesses out there too, that we want to make sure that we're protecting. The other thing as a subject, second subject, is that at the last council meeting, council president, you mentioned people getting involved, and how very few people get tonight. This is a great turnout, by the way. But I just wanted to make a comment. I just found out, I guess yesterday, that the hospital just withdrew their expansion proposal, and I know maybe there's some people that are sad to see that. I was actually kind of happy to see that, because in reading more and more about it, while I've been very grateful for the proximity and the help that I've used at hospital over the many years, that expansion just didn't seem right. It just seemed like it was, you know, has anybody thought about this? Have we thought about that? And fortunately, some of our voices from our community went to the Cape Cod Commission and spoke about it, addressed their concerns, brought up some issues, and really started to challenge and ask the right questions. And that got people thinking and got people talking more and more about it, and they're pulling back. So, whatever comes back, I don't know, but at least the voices are heard, so I hope you all still stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wasn't going to speak, but I decided to. Has been a long time. Lou Gonzaga, Village of Hyannis, born on Cape Cod. My father came here when he was two years old, as an immigrant, to Marson's Mills, and the house is known as the Marson's Mills Historical House. I'm sorry, the Maderis, Manuel C. Maderis Historical House. I just wanted to bring something that's being talked to tonight about unaffordable homes and all. If you take a look at a history of Cape Cod, the issues in the 1800s, in 1900s on Cape Cod were traffic. We have it today. What do we do with our elderly population? We have it today. Jobs for our children, they're leaving, we have it today. Unaffordable housing, we have it today. The difference back then was was more community. Children lived with their parents, it's starting to do that today, but there's some weird things that happens with that too, today, because a lot of children are ripping off parents. I see it, I'm a constable in the town. One of the things I do ask, if you're going forward with this, you know, Airbnb, checking the regulations, first, you have great attorneys here, use them. Talk to housing court. I was speaking with housing court today, yesterday, actually. Airbnbs does not come underneath a housing court. It's a commercial, and that's where you have to treat this. So if you have a residential area, and that's what the zoning is, you shouldn't have an Airbnb then, because it's a residential. Very easy on that. But my bottom line, I believe in affordable homes, but what we need is jobs. Town council, you're brand new. New council here, think of this. Promote the town of Barnstable. Be user-friendly, bring in businesses that you want in this town. Because with businesses, it creates jobs. Jobs create taxes. Taxes, I mean, spend the money that you get in to where it's supposed to also, but the bottom line, they will be able to afford those jobs. I remember back in the 70s, when I graduated at Barnstable High School, there used to be a program, and Puritan was a big one of it. They would bring kids in that were part of the business program, and then they would be mentored there. A lot of them learned and went on to business. I'm going to cut it short, because I probably went over. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? That'll make the mic work.
It's coming down lower to work though. So, as in the last time I met with you, this will be short and this will also be gratitude. So this is good. I wanted to thank, oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl Powell.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Centerville and chairman of the Hyannis Main Street and Waterfront Historic District Commission. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. I wanted to thank you. I know I've done so personally, but I wanted to thank President Hebert for his words last, at the last town council meeting, which I reiterated last night to the commissioners of the HHDC, which were very well-received. And I, as a mental health practitioner, I often find that with patients, it's nice to reiterate what the goals are. What is the game plan? Who are the players or players? What are we trying to do? Which is very much what President Hebert was mentioning. So that was very helpful. And as I said, it was very well-received. So I also wanted to say thank you to Christine Clark, who came and we had the honor of meeting her. She's one of our new advisors. Delighted to also have Jen Cullen as one of our advisors staying on. You were fantastic last year, so thank you again. Also, I understand that we have to thank the entire council because last time, we had the first reading for three new full members, two go up from alternate to full member and one new member. Thank you so much for that first reading. I understand they're up tonight. I know there's an error in here, but I told that's been corrected and it's just the way it's typed. But anyway, thank you very much. And you see, we do show up. Thank you.
Just so we all know, the mic does work even if you don't sign in. I have no control on the mic.
I'm Jeremiah Hagerty. Live in the town. I live in Osterville. And I'll keep this short as well. I enjoyed hearing everyone speak on the issues tonight. And they can speak, you know, well over my head in regards to this stuff. So I just, I'll keep it simple because that's probably all I'm capable of right now. But I am just interested in hearing the proposals set forward in terms of the short-term rental regulations. Like a few people had noted on, the job market is, it's rather thin for younger people around here. And I have found real estate to be one of the few ways that young people can make it work in this community. So although there have been, you know, some nightmares, stories from the group that presented, I obviously think that that should be handled accordingly. I don't know the exact solution for it, but I just warn against, you know, if it, I don't know the numbers behind it, and you guys may have a better idea of this, but if it's a few bad apples, maybe finding ways to prevent those houses from continuing on as opposed to, you know, cutting it off completely. I know that there are a lot of very good real estate agents in the town, and it seems as though the properties that are handled by those agents don't nearly have as many problems. I've heard stories from the group that presented that, you know, off-site investors who are, I think I heard the Marriott was trying to buy houses to rent out, whoever those stories may be, those don't, those don't belong in the town at all. So I just, I just want to say I'm looking forward to reviewing what they've put forward because for some people that want to stay in the area and remain, that influx of summer rentals, it helps to the point of if you didn't have them, you may have to find an alternative place to live. The other point being, I forgot what I was going to say about the rest, but I'm just looking forward to, you know, hearing what it is that's proposed. Oh, my other question was, everyone says Airbnb, but I just don't under, I'm just trying to comprehend what an Airbnb, you know, the difference between like a regular weekly summer rental and an Airbnb. You know, I think basically they're just, some of them could be a seven-day rental one way or the other, and Airbnb is just booked on a booking platform as opposed to through a traditional agent, which agents have been booking weekly rentals on the Cape for far longer than I've been around. So, you know, just maybe some clarity in the differences. I certainly hear the opinions that are put forward. So I just basically wanted to say I'm looking forward to looking into it further. All right?
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
And anyone else? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to ask the councillors to, all in favor of closing public comment? Is your hand? Okay. Is that unanimous? That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Okay, councillor's response to public comment. Councillor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, with regard to your reference to perhaps some council members not being pleased with you allowing the large group to go forward, I would not have been among them. I did not, as was stated, have any notice that they were going to speak or that they were going to do it en masse. But my account, there were 20, and I appreciated the fact that we didn't have 20 times three Secondly, I have not seen the draft regulations that I'm told were circulated today. I look forward to seeing those. I will say for the record, I am curious as to how the input or the comments that were received in the meetings with the various civic associations were accounted for. I would like to see that record. I will tell you that, given the number of emails, et cetera, that I've received over the last two weeks since people started to hear that there were going to be short-term rental regulations promulgated, there are a number of people that are concerned, far beyond the number that appeared here tonight. I found myself sitting last Sunday in someone's living room with a dozen people. I missed the Osterville Village Association meeting this past Tuesday, on which board I sit, but it passed a resolution because it said, I believe it was unanimous, they do not want short-term rentals. I understand the need to bring this to closure. I, as much as anybody, want to bring it to closure. But we do have to be mindful of the means by which citizens have an opportunity to have input. So I don't, I won't favor any process that favors expediency in lieu of transparency. So I, for one, will want to know how citizens are going to be made aware of the regulations and how they have an opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cullen, please.
Yes, thank you for coming to speak. And I just wanted to correct, Laura Cronin mentioned that the next meeting of the short-term rental committee, or the zoning committee, I'm sorry, dealing with short-term rentals, is actually the 20th of February, not the 27th. And it's at 6:00 PM. So hopefully, Mr. Hagerty could come to that and learn a little bit more about it. To answer your question on weekly rentals booked through a Realtor or weekly rentals booked on a website or a platform on the internet, it's the same thing with short-term rentals. Anything under 31 days is what we're looking at. But certainly, you are wise beyond your years, and we can use your conversation to be a public comment at those meetings, which is, it's a very, I believe, a very open forum. And I believe that this committee has been exhaustive in including community opinions, civic associations, surveys, and all of that. And it's really time now to scratch the paper and get something written down so that we can make a recommendation to this council, which will then polish the sneaker and hopefully get something on the books. Thank you.
Councillor Niri, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Steve for coming in tonight and kind of bringing to light what a war dog is. Steve, I spoke to him personally, and he's managed to bring up something that really has never been addressed in the town. And that is in terms of how did we go about offering up, in this case, a memorial? I think you've seen basically every department in town and been connected to him. So from a legislative standpoint, I guess we're going to have to work through whether this can be done at a department level or whether there needs to be a process established or directly through the town manager himself and his staff. So it certainly bears looking at, and hopefully, we can move forward with it. But there'll be a few steps. As far as, I think you were looking to get, was it Memorial Day?
Doesn't sound like it.
We'll see what we can do going forward. But again, thank you for being a stalwart, especially in my village of Centerville. You're tremendously active in many facets of the village, and I, for one, really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Councillor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank those who came out tonight, who spoke on a number of issues. Obviously, the issue of short-term rentals is top of the list for many of you. And we did have a meeting at 5:30 this evening to begin the discussion of an ordinance, two ordinances, one that would be general and one is zoning. And under the communications part of the agenda, I will brief the councillors on that meeting and the content of those proposals. So thank you for coming out.
Councillor Dagewell, please.
Yes, I think all of the speakers that spoke tonight spoke on very important issues. Mr. Louis, I'm going to put my glasses on. I'm going to say Steve since I don't have the glasses on. About the dog park. I think I was a proponent of the dog park, and I think this would be a great addition and a way to honor, you know, our friends who also have fought for us and protected us throughout, you know, the various wars. And as for Heather Hunt, I want to thank you again for coming tonight and also for coming at the last meeting and the way that you've presented this in such a respectful way to this council. Many times, the council was, you know, fingers pointed at us and, you know, we're not, you know, we're not listening, we're not making the right decisions. But we try to be a council that's encouraging, encourage our community to come in and talk to us. And when they come like this, and, you know, it's many came, it's nice to, for people to talk about the good things that we're doing and make us aware of the things that we should be more concerned about. So I just want to say, keep coming, keep sharing, you know, this information with us, and continue to do it in the respectful way that you've done in the last couple of times you've been here. As for Ms. Rowland, yeah, I think she said her name from Centerville, I'm faced with the same problem you young people are. I have a, my youngest right now is struggling to stay here on the Cape. Can't find housing. They're renting from us right now. We'd like to see them move on, buy our house or something. But it's just been difficult. And so it's at a point now where they're just saving money and they need a little more space. They're trying to expand their family. They love the Cape. They don't want to move. His sisters and others have moved, and they're all trying to, you know, talk him into, you know, moving other places. But he doesn't want to go. He wants to stay here. And their housing is an issue. And the town, it's a priority in the town. It's been a priority for the last few years, actually. And this council and the councils before us have been working on this. And I'm sure we're going to do the very best we can to try to address that issue. Jeremy spoke about the job market. I think that's important. That's one of the issues that one of my children left. They just, you know, they got a college degree, but just really couldn't find a good job here on the Cape. And I think that we're trying to look at the various markets out there and markets that we can bring here that's suitable for the Cape, that fits the Cape in marine science and just recycling, just many other areas that we can build upon. The healthcare system, the fact that we have such an elderly population, it is important to keep young people here. Well, us elderly are going to be taking care of ourselves. We are going to need some help, just as I've had the opportunity to have to help my parents and grandparents as they've grown older, be able to be there to help them. So I did want to speak that. Laura Cronin spoke about the civic association. I think it's so important because I've been a longtime member of the Hyannis Civic Association, and I find, being a member of the civic association, I find out a lot of other information about the town. It tells me a little bit more about where I live and makes me more aware and appreciate and protect the investment that I've made here by buying property here on the Cape. I've made an investment here in a particular neighborhood. And I worked very hard trying to keep that neighborhood safe and livable and thriving. And so I think it's important to people to join their civic associations. Many times, people come and they speak and they talk about things that are going on in their neighborhoods, but they don't seek their civic associations to find out what the civic associations are doing and how they can help you. It's power in numbers. So I just want to say that as a 30-year member of my civic association. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could speak to the issue of some comments back in terms of housing, I have three daughters and four grandchildren, and none of my daughters are on Cape anymore. They've all left. So in time in the future, my wife and I will also leave to be close to our family. But we raised them on Cape Cod, and it was a wonderful thing. But again, just the price of housing really kind of forced them to look at other areas to go to. So we're very sensitive about that, and it is a high priority for the council going forward to work at trying to develop. We are short some 1,200 or more rentals on Cape Cod just for workers and people to get started and get a foothold. One of the biggest problems with employers is they say they can't afford to pay enough for anyone that they want to hire that's coming from off Cape to get located anyways on the Cape. So it is a major problem. It's something that we all know about. In relation to the short-term rentals, we have, I don't know, somewhere between 600 plus, maybe 800 maximum. But for decades, people have made it that had a home on the Cape by renting out a room, by living in the campgrounds for two weeks or a month, renting out their homes. And that money helped pay their mortgage. That money helped them to repair their homes. So we know that that's kind of here to stay. I think that we'd have a revolution if we said nobody could do that anymore. And that's not what I'm hearing people saying. People are saying to be considerate and to take into account what the citizens are saying. So we're going to keep having to work on this very, very carefully. And as much as I would like to say that everything that everybody wants is going to end up being on the ordinance going forward or the regulatory, there may be some compromise and we may not get everything we want. But we're going to have to keep listening because, again, you're helping us to develop this. So please keep putting your ideas forward, and we're going to try to reach as best concession as we possibly can. Thank you on that. can. Thank you on that. Thank you very much. And then I'm glad you brought up the Cape Cod Hospital. They have 5,700 employees, 2,000 of them live in the town of Barnstable. They're concerned about the housing because when people come and apply for a position at the hospital and then find out how much it costs, including doctors have said, thanks for the offer for the position, but we're not going to stay in Cape Cod because it's too expensive to locate here. So that's a real problem. So we'll have to keep working on that. But the bottom line is that the hospital was looking at an expansion program and they wanted to put one, become listed as a trauma center. So right now, if any of us have an accident going home, that we don't have a trauma center here. So often we hear that somebody was transported to either a Boston Hospital Trauma Center or Providence Trauma Center. So it would be wonderful and advantageous to us if they eventually become a trauma center qualified hospital. They also want to work on advanced cardio treatment and also cancer treatment is another thing that they're working on, that they want to do this expansion to do that, which would benefit all of us. Just today, I got news of another member of our community that has cancer. And those treatments are all going to be done off Cape. So to have a hospital that can better treat cardio and cancer cases would be beneficial to us. What the hospital is saying, and they were keeping their applications for the future, is because they realize that they didn't get enough public input. They didn't get enough feedback and they were looking for more support in that process for the work that they want to go forward. So I do hope that, you know, you all stay tuned and then really get involved. And we're asking for public comment on that to hopefully eventually give us even better medical care than we're now able to provide for all of our people here on Cape Cod. So thank you very much. Thank you for your beautiful presentations here tonight. We'll keep going. You have the ability because you're all participating. When it comes to the vote on the zoning, we need two-thirds of this council to vote in the affirmative to change any kind of zoning on the Cape, I'm sorry, in Barnstable, as well as the ordinances or regulations. That's going to be a majority vote of this council. So we're all struggling with making sure that we represent our precincts, represent our people, and we're all going to keep working together. I wish I could promise everybody's going to be happy at the end, but we're going to do the very best we can. So thank you very, very much. Councilors want to close response to public comment? So moved? Everybody in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. We now have the town manager's report. Some of the confusion you saw here is we didn't have hard copies. So we now have it. So we're ready to go on that. And there's some very exciting things coming. Town manager, I encourage anybody who can to stay. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark L.'s town manager. Should I wait till people depart or shall I proceed?
No, you can get going. Maybe they'll hear what you have to say, which is wonderful stuff.
I don't take it personally.
Okay, I'm glad you don't. Thank you, Mark.
Good evening again, Mark L.'s. Just quickly to follow up on President Hebert's comments, Cape Cod Hospital, we've been in communication with them relevant to their proposed project, their proposed expansion, really on all issues even beyond that specific project. Mike Luff and I have regular conversations. We coordinate with one another. And certainly I expect that as they move forward with this project or any, that will continue. And I know that my staff is there with me to certainly provide any and all review, comment in coordination with Mike Luff and whoever he delegates authority to relevant to these various projects. So I very much expect they'll be bringing forward another project, perhaps modified, and certainly looking for public input as they do that. Secondly, the president of the town council has asked me to convene a panel relevant to 5G. And at this point, I am discussing who will sit on the panel. The intent is to educate, to inform, to engage our public in something that we're seeing here in Barnstable, but we're reading about across our country. And so I think it's important that we have an objective discussion and then we can get right down into the details with the specific concerns. And so I am organizing that. I do have a couple of potential panel members. I have and I will reach out to those that may be able to help me to identify other panel members. And I hope to have this in the very near future. Okay? We'll host it here. We'll record it. I know everybody can't always get here. They'll be able to watch it. And then we can begin to move forward relevant to this issue. Now on my formal report. I also tried, though it seems as though I may have failed, and I apologize if you got the one with my writing on it, but send this out before noon the day of the town council meeting, which I did. And originally, it was conveyed that you only wanted it in electronic version. But certainly Cynthia Lovell and I can coordinate to make sure if you'd like hard copy versus electronic version, whatever you like, we can provide it to you. Okay? And hopefully in a more timely manner. So it gives you an opportunity to look at it ahead of time in anticipation of what I might be bringing to you. The update for the period of January 24th through February 6th. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY 2021 is scheduled. I've attached the schedule as a reminder as to what we are following. We've prepared the proposed FY 2021 capital improvement budget for submission to town council on February 24th, 2020 as part of Part 6 of our charter. Town council must adopt the FY 2021 CIP before June 1st of 2020. So we'll obviously be having hearings scheduled typically in the month of April. So you'll be receiving this, having a month to look at it, certainly always available for questions as we proceed through this. Concurrently with this, we're preparing our operating budget as well. But we're at the final stages at this point of the proposed CIP. We've scheduled fiscal year 2021 town manager rate hearing on March 10th, 2020, 10:00 a.m. here in this room. It'll be televised. And we typically take comment at that hearing or post-hearing from the public. I take it under advisement. And after consultation with finance director, I will proceed with approvals or modifications to those fees. So we'll keep you advised as we progress on that. I'll also have another council meeting to be able to remind the public that this is coming up. Our town treasurer, Deb Blanchett, announced that the town of Barnstable received competitive bids from bond and note underwriters on Wednesday, February 5th, 2020 for a $10,855,000 20-year bond issue and a $2,52,950 one-year taxable note issue. Morgan Stanley Company was the winning bidder on the bonds with an average interest rate of 1.69%. I've given you some other information. Piper Sanders Company was the winning bid on the note at 1.88%. The town received a total of nine bids on the bonds and five bids on the notes. Bonds and notes proceed, proceeds, I'm sorry, will be used to finance various capital projects. Prior to the sale, Standard and Poor's Rating, a municipal bond credit rating agency affirmed the town's AAA bond rating. Thank you all for your leadership. Thank our treasurer. Thank our finance director and their respective staffs. AAA bond rating is outstanding. It doesn't get any better than that. So thank you all. It's all considered when they're looking at, and I list the rating agency site, the town's very strong economy, very strong management with strong financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, strong debt and contingent liability profile, and strong institutional framework as positive credit factors. So thank you all. As required by our town charter and administrative code, attached is the town's FY 19 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This document has been audited by the CPA firm of Powers &amp; Sullivan, and they have issued their report thereupon, which begins on page 19. A clean opinion was received. Two accompanying documents are still in progress, the management letter and the statement of federal financial assistance. If you would like copies of those when they come in, I will have Director Milne share them with you all. They're public information, but certainly we can send them directly to you. On January 23rd, the town council voted on 2020-074 appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $16,500 for the Barnstable Department of Public Works Fiscal Year 2020 Operating Expense Budget, so that's this current fiscal year, for the purposes of funding maintenance of the former Cotuit Elementary School located at 140 Old Oyster Road, Cotuit, Mass. On February 5th, 2020, the school committee voted favorably to transfer the remaining fund balance, which is in the amount of $28,611.59, in the revolving account for the Waldorf lease, that's who leased the Cotuit Elementary School previously. They release these funds to the Town of Barnstable General Fund. These funds upon transfer become a revenue source of the general fund, subject to appropriation of the town council. At the end of the fiscal year, it is close to the general fund surplus. We are requesting that the Cotuit Elementary School be referred by the town council to the asset subcommittee of the town council so that a recommendation can be made relevant to purpose and funding for this municipal asset. We anticipate a request in FY 2021 operating budget for year-round maintenance of this facility, referenced in Town Council Order 074, because that was only half a fiscal year's maintenance for this unoccupied building. So we will, if we're going to continue to leave it unoccupied but maintain it, there will be one cost. If after review of the asset, we determine we have purpose and we want to fund that purpose, it would be a different amount. But we need to have those discussions both with the subcommittee and certainly our community in the village of Cotuit. And we'll continue with this approach until we determine that long-term use of the property. Our Department of Public Works continues their efforts of public water supply well rehabilitation at the Mary Dunn 4 well site and are actively installing test wells on numerous sites across Barnstable. We plan to complete the test well drilling in February of 2020. I've attached a summary of well drilling activities and site maps. So basically, we are out there doing this now and we will continue this through the remainder of the month. Public Works provided Conservation Commission with an update on well drilling activities and continue meetings with the other water purveyors in Barnstable as we look comprehensively at water management. And we will continue to report our progress and findings relative to these efforts. As part of proposed modifications to drinking water regulations, Mass. Department of Environmental Protection intends to set a maximum contaminant level of 20 parts per trillion for total PFOS. Mass. DEP held a series of public hearings around the state to describe the proposed modifications and solicit input. We attended and provided comment on January 28th, 2020. Hearing and public comment period ends February 28th, 2020. I've given you the link to their website. So for the viewing public, if they wish to review and comment, we can certainly provide that. Or you can just go on mass.gov and go into the Department of Environmental Protection and put in PFOS and this will come up. Certainly, it's an issue for all on Cape Cod and certainly right here in Barnstable and in Hyannis. When Brian Florence, Barnstable's Building Commissioner, commenced employment in 2017, there were over 90 properties that were abandoned or in various states of disrepair identified here in Barnstable. Commissioner Florence and I met to discuss a strategic approach to enforce our codes and to abate violations at those properties. And I referenced the Mass. General Law for which gives the building commissioner these specific authorities to proceed in this manner. It's Mass. General Law 143, Section 6 through 12. We discussed the role of the code officials and how it was necessary to triage those properties to address life safety concerns first and first and foremost. And after that, turn our attention to lesser code violations. Commissioner Florence outlined a plan to categorize the properties in terms of critical concerns, significant concerns, and then concerns just in general. And our plan to begin to address these critical concern properties. I participated in a site tour of the five worst properties involving building, and it involved our building department, our legal department, and our fire department in the respective villages. Since that meeting, we have continued to review and address the identified properties and have worked to abate the most hazardous conditions. We have conducted multiple enforcement activities and have had several of the most dangerous structures in the town demolished as a result of our actions. Over the last 29 months, the building division has worked in cooperation with fire officials from our various fire districts and utilized our collective institutional knowledge to identify structures that were unsafe and a danger to the public. During that time, we conducted field inspections and made observations of dozens of properties that were ultimately posted as unsafe structures in accordance with the Mass. General Laws and the State Building Code. Once our inspectors started an enforcement action as required by law, we work closely and cooperatively with the property owners to issue building permits and render assistance as needed to help them abate the hazards on their properties. To date, we permitted and concluded the inspection process that oversaw the demolition of 22 principal structures that were extremely dangerous and posted as hazardous to the public. We should continue this effort and keep you advised of our progress on this matter. I point this out to you because 24 months ago, we were regularly discussing these issues and many others. And I will take the time during my manager's communication to bring forward the good work of the staff of the town of Barnstable on many issues. This will be the first one I'll identify. We talk about public works and water and wastewater quite a bit, but there are many other very important issues going on in our community. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to discuss. I'm going to try to give a little bullet too. I thought about whether I was asked actually to put all of this up. And I thought, I don't know that people will read that in a PowerPoint. So the way I'll do it is I'll give a simple overview of the main points so that the viewing public certainly can see it. But then when I come up before you, I'll read the detail. If you'd like me to do something else, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I do point out that, thank you, Mark, that I think the bullets are great because people can see it from home. But more and more people are watching. So when you give your report, it's to report really to the whole community, not just to the council. This is a report so that the community knows the work that the manager and the departments are doing within the town. So.
We also include all the information in the e-news that goes out tomorrow.
Right.
And we reach thousands of people through that communication.
Yeah.
So if anybody's watching and they don't get e-news, just click on town website and join up, sign up.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor's response to questions, comments to the town manager. Councilor Niri, please.
Thank you, Mark, again for your report. This handout we just received, it looks like the new This handout we just received, it looks like the new well locations that are occurring in town, is that posted anywhere on the site? Or I'm assuming that this is probably a color picture that's just printed in black and white?
The one I emailed was color. I'm not sure what you received, sir.
All right. I'm not seeing color on this, and it's pretty hard to figure out what I'm looking at here.
I will.
So, I can find it somewhere else?
Yeah. Well, if it's been emailed to you, when you open it, it's in color.
Excellent.
And then, depending on the printer that's selected, you can get color.
You can blow it up or something, be able to see it. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you for your report, Mark. Just curious, of those 90 properties, are any of them or have any of them been occupied recently?
Building Commissioner Florence is here, so I'll let him come up.
Thank you.
And share that information with you. Come in this side? Okay, great. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Counselor Snapp. So, as Town Manager L said, those properties were in various states of disrepair. So, the 22 that we've had demolished have been the most egregious. There are some properties that are lived in, so you have things from, you know, hanging shutters and messy yards and junk in the yard to buildings that are collapsing. So, the ones that we have addressed in this report was the ones that were collapsing. There are still some others that we're working on.
And do you know whether they're occupied, those that are occupied are owner occupied or rentals or what?
I think it runs the gamut. So, you know, the ones that are falling down, the ones that we've talked about here tonight, there was nobody living in them. They were literally, some of them were falling in on themselves, and we still have some that are, those have been notified. But the ones that you're talking about, maybe people living in, not in that kind of shape. And I don't know if they're tenants or owners.
Well, I would hope if with our rental registration program, we would have identified any serious hazards, and people wouldn't be able to rent out those units.
These are not those homes.
It sounds like a lot of these would have a lot of exterior problems, because how else would we know the extent of the violations for some of these properties?
For decades, I believe, the Fire Departments and perhaps the Building Department, but not to my knowledge, had lists of these properties. And when I came on and when Building Commissioner Florence came on, we sat down, we had a discussion about them, we asked what the mechanism was to address unsafe properties. We had also heard from our civic associations and our residents in general, that this was a concern in our community. So, putting all that together, we came up with a strategy. Certainly, any occupied structure, we will have a different approach with than an abandoned structure. I mean, I think you may remember a property right on Main Street behind those right out on the roadway where an individual fell through the floor and they found him in the basement, that was one of the properties. So, we have many of these across our community and they're not safe, and we will use a mechanism and a very, you know, appropriate legal approach, an objective review where it's typically the Fire Chief, the Building Commissioner, and a third party. Many times, it's our Town Engineer that is brought in to assist, to make sure that we've identified a property properly, that we've communicated with the owner. We should try to get it secured initially, and then ultimately try to work with the owner on the appropriate remedy.
Well, I commend your effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Commissioner Florence, before you go, my question is in the same vein. Are, of these 90 properties, are these predominantly residential properties, or are there also commercial properties?
We've had several commercial properties torn down. I don't have the list in front of me, but of the 22, I'm going to guess somewhere around seven or eight of those were commercial. Yeah, so it's both.
Okay. Just wondering what the mix of the 90 properties was.
I have the list. I can forward it to the council.
Great. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but I believe there is a schedule for commercial buildings, group accommodations, to be inspected on some kind of, by the Fire Department at least, to be inspected, and that even homes by the Commissioner or the assessor within like a five-year period or 10-year period, so that that would be, and maybe that doesn't exist, but my understanding is that that does exist, if we could use that to check out any homes that we're concerned about.
So, a couple of things. Counselor Snapp had asked about the rental registration, and does that catch these? The buildings we're talking about are severely derelict, so the rental registration isn't, they're not picking up on those. They pick up on smaller issues that are identified that they can deal with. Sometimes there's numerous issues like, you know, clogged drains and things like that. So, that's not what we're talking about. And, Mr. President, the inspection cycles that you're talking about, yeah, the building code has a series of inspections for, there are five years for multifamily dwellings, there are every year for assembly use groups like your restaurants and your bars and things like that. So, again, that's not one of the things that are really going to pick up this kind of thing that we're talking about, because they're much more deleterious than the stuff we're inspecting on an annual basis, right? We get that stuff taken care of right away.
Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the report. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing forward positive things that the staff is doing. I think it's very important for the public to hear that we have experienced and reliable staff that are credible in their work and that diligently do their work. It seems to me, from serving on committees over the years, that there's a general sense of malaise from certain people toward the town, and I think it's super important that we're out there telling people the truth, telling people what we're doing all the time. I know that the Hyannis Civic Association at one point was driving around looking for derelict properties and listing them, and at the last, I think it was at the last meeting I attended, they were talking about what happened to the list. Well, so now I can say, you know, you can check out the list and see what's happened. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much for your report, Mark. And I applaud the town for being forward-thinking about looking for future potential water sources. And I see that it's going to be done this month. If there's a chance to offer me a approximate schedule when the drilling is being done in my precinct, I'm getting some phone calls periodically on what's going on. At least I can give a heads up to the neighborhood.
I'll have Director Santos do his best to give you the week that will be there, weather and.
Yes, under.
Changing conditions can, especially this time of year, can.
Thank you.
Impact that.
Mark, I know that Mr. Steve Luciani is going to be contacting you to move forward.
He has.
He has.
He has, and it is the Town Manager under the Charter that's been delegated the authority to make determinations as to how properties in the town are used, managed, maintained, et cetera. So, I'm the appropriate person. I referred it off when I received the request. It initially wasn't at the dog park. I wanted to hear back from my staff where the best location would be for this type of monument. I did hear back, and it sounds as though it will progress. I think it's an appropriate location, given that we have a dog park, and this would honor more dogs. So, I expect that it will proceed appropriately.
So, my concern is, and certainly you could check with legal and whatever, but the fact that he did present here, what kind of organization does he have? Does he have a nonprofit that he's working with? Okay, that, it wasn't indicated in the paperwork, so that's fine, as long as it's taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Any other counselors? Okay, Mark, thank you very, very much. So, now we have some wonderful presentations. We're going to start with the airport, key service, the Barnstable Municipal Airport. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank you for having me here tonight. Over the past year or so, thank you, Matt, over the past year or so, you may have heard me talk about the Airport Master Plan and the Airport Business Plan. I wanted to provide you with an update as to where the airport is on both of these documents. We've been moving along pretty nicely. With me tonight, I have our Airport Chair, Commission Chair, John Griffin, and Assistant Airport Manager, Matt Ilya. Thanks, Matt. So, tonight, I just want to give you an update, as I've mentioned, about the Airport Master Plan and the Airport Business Plan, and then to go over quickly next steps. We've had a lot of change over the 20 years since the last master plan was completed. We've had a lot of good change. We've completed a number of airport improvement projects, leveraging millions of dollars in grant funding to enable us to complete those projects. Over the 20-year period, we've leveraged $73 million in grant funding to be able to improve our airport, providing, you know, new taxiway and runway environment and new terminal and tower. So, we've actually been lucky in that sense that we've been able to continue improving our facility for this area. We've also implemented a number of environmental enhancements at the airport. Green initiatives and stormwater treatment facilities have been implemented over the years with various projects that we've had at the airport. As you know, we've installed a 7-megawatt solar array system that helps us reduce our carbon footprint. We've removed a number of underground fuel storage tanks that we have at the airport, and we've replaced them with either above-ground tanks or natural gas that we use. And we've also implemented a number of good housekeeping practices at the airport, and we know it's important to be good environmental stewards at the airport, and we're proceeding along that manner. Most recently, we were able to lease out a 26-acre parcel of airport land that's managed by the airport to WS Development, and that was with a lot of help from Town Council and from Town of Barnstable's great staff, we were able to do that. So, that was a really good win for the airport. Now, I said we had a lot of good. Well, we've had some bad and some ugly. Over the 20-year period, we have seen some major declines in airport operations, passenger throughput, and revenue. That decline really began around 2007 and 2008. We saw an 85% decrease in passenger activity. That's huge. From 2007 fiscal year 2007, we accommodated over 421,000 passengers. In fiscal year 2018, that was down to just over 61,000. That's a big drop. In total airport operations, and those are considered landings and takeoffs, in 2007, about 130,000 total operations, and that dwindled by 37%, down to just over, almost nearly 82,000. The declines can be attributed to industry-wide pilot and mechanic shortages. Airports such as ours, where we have a lot of smaller commercial operators, Cape Air, Rettich Shuttle, they were hit on the hardest for those types of shortages. A lot of folks went into the major airlines. So, as you can imagine, they were leaving those shorter short-haul operators and going to the major airlines for work. We've had increased competition with the high-speed passenger ferries. It's a good thing for our community that we have the passenger ferries and the high-speed option, but the airport probably needs to rethink how we're operating to be able to compete with that. It's great that we have that ability of both types of transportation. We just need to figure out how to work with it. The loss of one of our airlines, Island Airlines, in 2015 also impacted us significantly. That was a loss of about 88,000 passengers a year, and we haven't really seen that come back. We've had a temporary loss in 2019 of Rettich Shuttle. They put their operations on hold as of November of this year. We're hopeful that they'll be coming back to the airport, but right now, they are on hold. They're rethinking their operations. And then, because of these declines, we said, you know, we really need to look at a different way of approaching business at the airport. So, with the help of the Airport Commission and some other outside agencies, the Massachusetts Business Development, we started working on a business plan in November of 2017, and we completed that plan and started to put into practice this past June. So, June of 2018, 2019, we started to really start, see, and turning the corner in what we could do at the airport. We will rebound. I think with the business plan in place and the Airport Master Plan in place, we're starting to see a comeback. I think we really hit rock bottom at the airport, and we're starting to see a change. And I think a lot of that change is really focusing on how we can better serve the community, how we can be better business partners in the Town of Barnstable, and how we can grow together to make this, you know, a good place to live and a good place to work. Tonight, I was encouraged to hear, actually, a lot of the public commenters talk about, you know, the hard times that they have about young people living in this area, buying homes in this area. And when you think about it, I think we're at a really change that we're seeing in Barnstable, where we have a really great multimodal system. And if we can provide an airport that can provide those that want to live on the Cape and work on the Cape, an opportunity to get to business meetings, an opportunity to do their business but still have the luxury of living on Cape Cod, I think, you know, an airport is one way to do it, and to promote services at this airport to enable them to move freely into the national airspace system. So, the Airport Business Plan, we started with four goals of the business plan. Those goals have 13 objectives and over 80 tasks. When I counted that today, I said, Matt and I have our work cut out for us. But the four goals include the ones that are listed on your screen. Goal A, maximizing the general aviation activity. And what I mean by that is not only your corporate aircraft that utilize the airport, but also those smaller aircraft, two- and four-passenger aircraft, that oftentimes people are learning how to fly in. Diversifying our revenue stream, basically taking it from not relying solely on aviation as the source of our income, but looking at other opportunities such as the, what we know as the Kmart Plaza, which the airport owns, that's diversifying our revenue stream. So, we're looking at other opportunities outside of aviation, so we can move and flow with changes in the aviation industry. Becoming a regional transportation leader, air transportation leader, and that goes to what I was just talking about, living where you work and working where you live. And then enhancing the airport image and branding, those are our goals. What I'd like to go over with you now is kind of where we are in fiscal year 2020 for those goals. So, Goal A, which is to maximize general aviation activity, it has four objectives listed there, providing the best-in-region aviation facilities and experience, fostering aviation education, creating a corporate aviation opportunity at the airport, and engaging recreational general aviation market. So, right now, for fiscal year 2020, we're about 48% complete on meeting those goals, and we actually started working on objectives that we identified for 2021, just because the opportunities were there. So, in speaking of providing the best-in-region aviation facilities, we're about 36% complete in that objective. It includes modifications to our existing facilities to better accommodate our customers. We're working with Channel 18 on developing a general aviation ease-of-access video that we can post on social media websites and provide to different flying clubs that are in Massachusetts and the New England area. We have also hired a new on-call marketing team to help us not only with promoting general aviation, but to promote the airport in general, along all of our goals that we have in this business plan. For fostering aviation education, we're about 67% complete in that area for 2020. We had a goal of hosting six events at the airport that revolved around aviation education as a theme. We actually completed eight so far, and we have more to come. A night in the terminal sleepover for scouts. We have four scouts teams that are Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts that have come to us about hosting them this year, so we're trying to figure out the logistics of that. And Eric Stein, Hilary, your wife's one of those groups that she's bringing her Girl Scouts over, which is great. We have FAST Team Safety Seminage for Pilots. Those are promoted by the FAA. It brings in general aviation pilots from really a vast array of locations. We've had people from Rhode Island come to these seminars, and we've gotten 20 and 30 pilots coming to the airport to learn about different aspects of safety, aviation safety. And we also completed our first-ever Southeastern Massachusetts Aviation Career Fair at the airport. We had over 400 students from nearby schools participate in that, with nearly 40 exhibitors from all different reaches of aviation, all different types of industry leaders that presented to those students, and we'll be doing it again October 20th of this year. Those are just some pictures. The photograph on the upper left is from the Aviation Career Fair. The photograph on the upper right is the first Cub Scout sleepover that we had at the airport. And then Tammy Cunningham, who is the Assistant HR Director here, had her Girl Scout troop come to the airport for a couple of hours and learn about aviation. So that was great to have them there. Identifying, creating corporate aviation opportunities. We're about 15% complete in this area. We need to make some airfield modifications to accommodate some of the corporate traffic that we're seeing coming through the airport. However, we have been reached by four entities that want to build private hangars, two of them which are for corporate lodger hangars, which is fantastic. At this point in time, even though we have a lot of corporate traffic, we do not have a jet aircraft based at the airport. This means that there's potential for three to be based at the airport in the near future. Engaging recreational GA market, general aviation market. Because of Matt's efforts, we are about 78% complete in this area. This past Saturday, we celebrated the first anniversary, first year of the Experimental Aircraft Association Chapter 51, chapter that was established at the airport. We also have a new Cape Cod Aero Club that's located at Hyannis. What it is, is a number of pilots that share an aircraft. We have 18 pilots sharing one aircraft. They share the cost of that aircraft, but it enables them to do what they love to do, which is fly, but to share the cost in those flights, because as you can imagine, some aviation endeavors are pretty expensive. So it's good that you can share that love for aviation. We also would like to start preparing for the summer of 2020, and we want to coincide some of our events with events that are happening here in Barnstable, such as the Father's Day Car Show. So we'd like to coincide that event with a flying at the airport. I already spoke to RTA tonight about possibly allowing us to use a shuttle to get pilots over to the car show. We'll be talking about that, Tom. Goal B is to diversify our revenue stream. We're about 20% complete in this goal. Most of this goal will be completed as part of the Airport Master Plan update that we're doing, where we'll look at other sources of revenue, both aviation and non-aviation. Goal C is to become a regional air transportation leader, to support the community business and tourism needs, establishing an airport marketing program that reaches out to Cape residents that we know are traveling to Boston or to Providence to fly out to do business. In fact, we did a recent, we completed a recent study that shows a number, just over 200,000 Cape residents are going off Cape to, for air transportation. And with the efforts that Matt and I have to bring some additional commercial service to the airport, these are residents that we could possibly market to, to start using Hyannis Airport rather than traveling to Boston or to Providence. This goal is also to grow our commercial service at the airport. Growing commercial service at the airport takes time. We've always told ourselves that it's about a five-year lead time when you start speaking to airlines to come to the airport. Matt and I have talked to you about going to Jump Start Events, which are speed dating for airports and airlines. We've done that now. This will be our second year in a row for 2020. In fact, last year, when we were at one of these events, I cornered one of the airlines in the hotel elevator and pleaded with him to come to Hyannis. Well, that person and that airline is now coming to Hyannis. So those work. So growing commercial service at the airport, we thought would really be a long-term endeavor. I think it will still be a long-term endeavor for other types of airlines, but Southern Airways Express will be coming to the airport on April 17th. They will be flying Cessna caravans, which is similar to what Island Airlines flew out of the airport. They will start doing flights from Hyannis to Nantucket, but they do have plans to further their service by working with one of their code shares, which is American Airlines, to go to Boston. So we'll see how they do, and we're just very excited that they're going to be part of the team. Goal D is to enhance the airport image and branding, to really assess the current perception of the airport. When we started the master plan process, we held stakeholder meetings and realized that there are often a lot of misconceptions about Hyannis Airport and about the use of that airport. In fact, oftentimes, people are not even looking at it, at our airport, as a possibility to fly. They figure it's, the comments that we received is, "It's either too expensive," or "It's just an airport that flies people to Nantucket, and that's it." So we need to change our image and make sure that people know what possibilities there are out of Barnstable Airport. Defining the airport brand and branding implementation, and then increasing Hyannis community involvement in different events that we have at the airport. So like I said, assessing the current perception, we started that with the master plan process. We're about 27% complete. I think as we go through the master plan process, we'll gather more information through our public meetings and additional meetings that we'll have with stakeholders. Defining the Hyannis brand, that is at 0% complete, because truly, we're waiting for the master plan to kind of provide us with the information that we need. However, this is one of the first tasks that we have planned for our marketing team that we just hired. Branding implementation. The reason why I say we're about 30% complete is because we started a blueprint with our marketing team to move forward as part of the master plan, to get an understanding of, you know, what possibilities we have for rebranding the airport. Increasing community involvement. In fiscal year 19, we were 100% complete in what our goals were. In fiscal year 2020, we're about 20% complete, but we have hosted a number of events, such as the Cape Cod Young Professionals Event, that's been held at the airport for many, many years now. Duffy Health Center, their annual gala was held at the airport just recently in May of last year. The first-ever electric vehicle car show. So we try to have different events at the airport that are not necessarily about aviation, it's about the community. This is something that is really from off the radar. This was, this problem, if you will, was a unique opportunity that was posed to us just recently. We have an entity that is interested in possibly developing a multi-use facility at the airport. It would include an airport restaurant, an aviation museum, aviation playground, meeting space, and event and conference space. I think this is a great opportunity for the airport. It checks a lot of boxes on our business plan, but it also responds to some of the comments that we received as part of the stakeholder meetings that we had for the master plan. I will be coming back to Town Council in the near future in regards to a feasibility study that will look at this unique opportunity and see if it is feasible at the airport. So you will hear about this again. The Airport Master Plan, I promise you, I'm almost done. What is a master plan? It's an official FAA planning document, but it reflects the town of Barnstable's goals and the airport's goals. It depicts what the future of the airport could be, covering a span of 20 years. What is generated for a need of a master plan? It's been some time since we've looked at a plan, an overall master plan for the airport. Like I said earlier, since 2000, we have not looked at completing a master plan, and that is quite some time, 20 years. So we're due to look at that. Changes in the aviation industry, changes in how we do business, have really prompted us to move forward with the master plan. The master plan goals, you see there on the graphic that I have the master plan in the middle, but it's supplemented by additional factors, such as the town of Barnstable's strategic goals. We want to make sure that the master plan goals reflect what the goals are of the strategic plan of Town Council. We want to make sure that the master plan goals also look at our business plan goals and look at them, make sure that we're still in alignment with the direction that we want to go at the airport, and making sure that that makes sense. And also, of course, meeting MASTA and FAA goals and requirements for federal aviation requirements. We have put together a planning advisory group for the master plan. The role of the planning advisory group is to really, it's a focused committee. It's made up of airport tenants and users, town officials, local businesses, community groups, Cape Cod Commission, and federal and state officials, to help us plan this master plan into the future. The purpose is to provide us with necessary feedback on airport issues and to help us direct and consider what the different elements that we need to consider in the master plan. The planning advisory group meetings will be there to share thoughts, discuss schedules, present interim reports, and to develop solutions to any challenges that we hit along the way as part of the master plan. I wanted to show you a listing of the members of the planning advisory group. We really try to identify all of those groups that would, stakeholders that would really have an interest in what we're doing at the airport. We've included Town Council, Town of Barnstable, Town Manager, and Department Heads. The Greater Hyannis Civic Association is included. We think it's important that they know what's happening in their backyard, at the airport. It's probably been some time since they've heard from the airport, so we are glad they're going to be part of that. Steamship Authority, MASTA Highway District 5, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, the Young Professionals. You know, this is, I think, a good grouping of those users of the airport and those that really want to make a difference in how this airport is shaped. The master plan process, we go through a series of required inventory and forecasting to say what the future will hold for us. So inventory is, what do we have at the airport? And prior to the inventory, we had stakeholder listening sessions, and we'll also be having our first project advisory group meeting on the 18th of February to go over those reports. Facility requirements is really an identification of what we need. So we know what we have, what do we need to move forward in the future. Alternatives, we'll look at options to do what we need to do for those, to meet those facility requirements. What options do we have? Looking at alternatives, looking at different impacts to the environment and how that's going to affect the environment. Implementation plan, how do we implement this? How do we move forward? And then final reports. We will be holding two public meetings for June of 2020 and again, September of 2020. We want to make sure that those public meetings were available for those that are transient residents of this area, make sure that there were timeframes that people who do own second homes can participate in those public meetings. The next step is really, is a master plan website. It's in the development stage right now. That's the location where we will have draft documentation, reports and plans. We will have public meeting schedules identified there, as well as ways that the public can download the reports and plans, and then final reports and final outcome. The project contacts are listed here. On the left-hand side are on-call planners that we have through McFarlane-Johnson, and of course, our contacts from Matt and myself. And that's all I have. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much. Counselors, questions, comments? Counselor Cullen, please.
Thanks for the presentation, very thorough as usual. And I just have to remark that it's so great to see such vision at the airport, and I know that a big part of that was getting Kmart, the Kmart Plaza off the ground and making that work, but there's such a new renewed energy there, and I love the fact that you're reaching out to the Civic Association and engaging all stakeholders, and it's just such a comprehensive view of Barnstable, and it's excellent. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President, Raprassetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Katie, and Matt, and Mr. Griffin, thank you for your service. Tell me a little bit about this new venture that's happening at Cape Town Plaza, because I know they're under your control, the Air and Space Museum. I see this as maybe a prelude to what might happen on the radar, that bit?
I think that bit is correct. Sure, I can provide you with some additional information. The Air and Space Museum reached out to us, and you may have seen the article in the Cape Cod Times today. They reached out to, actually Bud and myself, when Bud was here, Bud Briot, the former airport manager, about housing a museum at the airport. They have a lot of donors that want to see them in Hyannis. They've identified this as a logical step, especially with the amount of tourism that they have coming through the Cape Cod region, as well as the connection to Massachusetts and aviation. So it just seemed to be a logical fit. So we've been working with the Air and Space Museum for some time. In fact, we have some of their artifacts that are now in the terminal building. We hope to expand that as well. But when WS Development won the bid for Kmart Plaza, they went directly to WS Development and asked if they could utilize some space to have some type of a storefront or a way to start presenting the museum in an effort to eventually come to the airport at some point in time. Their donors really wanted them to see, see them use an existing brick-and-mortar facility to start, to see how well it was, to see how many folks came to the museum, to visit the museum as an initial start. So I think it's a great opportunity for us. It's great that they're going to be over at the plaza, and then hopefully, that will lead into being at the airport at some point.
Yeah, I think the educational opportunities are endless with that, and I wish you well and good luck with your feasibility and your master plan, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Levecq.
Hi, Katie. Thank you, Katie, Matt, John, thanks for being here, and again, your service to the Commission. Just so excited about what's happening at the airport, and I know I was a part of, I got to be part of, one of the Committee's meetings that took place here, and you were talking a little bit more about the rebranding. Is that's really what's going to be discussed at these meetings as far as possibility of changing the name of the airport, making a more regionalized kind of theme to it, and obviously, working towards, you know, making the airport more of a destination? And my last question was, how can we move towards making the parking lot a little bit more welcoming as far as letting people know that it really is free if you visit the coffee shop, or if you're, you know, that type of thing, or if you're there for a certain amount of time that it's, you know, very, you know, it's a dollar, if you're there for 30 minutes or less, or that type of thing? How can we educate people to understand that it is very accessible?
Sure, thank you. In terms of the rebranding, possibly renaming of the airport, you know, that's something that we've thought about for many years. It's something that we will be discussing as part of the master plan, but also as part of our overall general business plan as well. And I think we're, you know, I think a lot of people do not know Barnstable. They know Hyannis. They do not necessarily know the name of Barnstable. Many pilots that are coming into the region often call us Barn-stable. So I think that, and HIA, yep, you all have your stickers. So I think that oftentimes, especially when you're talking about corporate users that use the airport, when they see something that says Barnstable Municipal, when they see municipal in the name, they think of it as a smaller airport. I mean, our airport is the same size runways as the Vineyard in Nantucket, you know? So I think that we have to look at that and look at possibly rebranding the airport, and that includes the name. We're not sure, we haven't come up with a lot of names yet, but I think that that's a possibility that we're going to look into as part of this plan. And then to answer your next question about the facilities at the airport, I think really we have a lack of marketing for the airport. A lot of people don't recognize the airport as being part of Barnstable, as being part of the town, as being a multimodal option for this region, and I think that lies on our shoulders, that we haven't gone out and marketed the airport adequately, nor have we had the money in the past 10, 20 years to be able to do that. So now that we do have some extra funds that are coming into the airport, it enables us to diversify a little bit more and to provide those types of services that we desperately need at the airport. Thanks.
Counselor Dagwan, please.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, for everybody who came tonight to share this with us. I'm really excited about your marketing plan to try to better market the airport. I think, as you said a few minutes ago, I think a lot of people don't recognize the airport. It's not a visible entity in town, and I, you know, the fact that they were interested in doing some kind of a museum, I could see, you know, I could see a gift shop there, I could see a tourist spot where people would come and, you know, pick up little trinkets to take home as they do on the Main Street here in town. It's great that you're trying to pull, you know, education and involving the scouts and others, and it is really important, I think, that, you know, me, myself, very seldom go over to the airport, and most people are inanimate when they go to an airport. It's just like, "Oh, you know, I don't care if it's a little airport or a big airport." It's just something different. So I think it could be a great attraction. So I, you know, I really appreciate that you're doing, you know, stepping up your marketing on that and marketing it, you know, through the town, so it's, you know, it's becoming part of our tourist destinations. becoming part of our tourist destinations to go to. The fact that you're, you know, interested in doing a restaurant, you know, everybody likes to go out to eat, and they're always looking for a different place to go. So I think that would be a nice place, if you could, you know, generate something like, with a playground, I mean, who, you know, who wouldn't love bringing, you know, their whole family there to something like that? But I did want to ask about improving the access to the airport and exit to the airport. Have you been looking at that? Because that's a real issue for me, you know, just, you know, not so much going to the airport, but getting off the airport at times.
Right. No, that's a great question. As part of the master plan, that was one of the items and the issues that was highlighted as a major issue that we have for the airport that needs to be evaluated as part of the master plan. It's one of the reasons why we have asked the State, the Director for Highway Division of the Taunton District Number Five to be present and to be part of that discussion. We know that the Mastah Highway is looking at renovations that they're going to be doing coming up recently. They're also looking at possibility of changing the rotary. So now's the time for us to start planning and make sure that we're coordinating with Mastah Highway and obviously with DBW here in Barnstable, to make sure that we're really looking at the access, and if we want this to be a great option for people to choose this airport rather than going up to Boston and Providence, we need to do something about access and better access to the airport.
It's such a gem, so we really should, you know, really, you know, idolize it or, you know, present it so that, you know, people can see the gem that it is.
I agree. Thank you.
Keep up the good work, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert, and thank you very much for a great presentation, as always. My issues are more of concern. I represent Precinct Nine, so we're talking about Barnstable Road and Winter Street and the Ridgewood Park neighborhood, and when I hear things like grow commercial service, add hangars, bring in jets, I will tell you, for the first, I've been in my home for 15 years, for the first 10, enjoying the backyard was quite nice, other than the faraway distant drone of a small Cape Air and Island Air flight. The introduction of commercial JetBlue service, while it might have gone down well in Barnstable County, I would say did not go down as well in Precinct Nine. There's a huge difference between a small Cape Air aircraft and a jet screaming overhead. Conversation comes to a halt, the bird baths and the beverages get leveled out, the pair of red-tailed hawks that resided in Ridgewood Park, from what I understand, a very long time, have not been seen in over five years, so they've been run off. So for the residents of my precinct, growth in a way represents something different, and I don't know that I went into buying my house thinking I was buying in Revere and Logan was just across the way. I don't know that anyone ever thought that way. It's pretty evident to us now with the introduction of jets that there are, in fact, flight paths directly over our homes. I guess my question is, where would the cap be, or is there a cap on development of the airport?
Well, I think you have to look at the airport and look at our facility and see what can actually conceivably be developed there. So when you're talking about jet traffic or aircraft of different sizes coming in, our longest runway right now is 5,400 feet. We do get JetBlue, we can, 100-passenger aircraft in there without issue. We do have a number of corporate jets that have been flying at the airport for quite some time. You know, jet power is, has evolved over the years, and I, you know, the noise signature that they used to emit back in the 70s is quite different from what they emit now. So it is different in the technology. In terms of how much the airport would grow, as part of the master plan, we have said, as well as the Commission, that, you know, the growth is to remain in our existing boundaries. So even the thought of looking at a runway extension, which we are looking at, it would be within the existing airport boundaries, within the existing 639 acres that we have. You know, at one point in time, on the screen that I had above, we had many, many more operations. We had, you know, over 400 and some odd operations back in 2008, and over the years, we have declined significantly so. We anticipate receiving comments from the public that got used to the quieter atmosphere of the airport. We anticipate comments from them about increases in activity, but at one point in time, the airport did have that type of activity, and I think with the economy that we've lost a lot of that. So I don't think we're bringing back anything new, but we're bringing back what was here 20, you know, 30 years ago, where we did have five different airlines that were operating at the airport.
Is there a way, I know obviously there are multiple runways, runways that go out over Willow Street, which is predominantly commercial property. Is there a way to sort of direct air traffic where larger flights are sort of shut, you know, forced to take off from runways that maybe go out and over commercial areas versus those residential neighborhoods? And I don't know if, because the service is new, some of the pilots are just, you know, they come in a little hot and low, I've got to tell you, sometimes.
You know, the pilots, the way that they're operating on the airfield is really dependent on the winds, but for an aircraft you want to fly into, into the wind when you're coming in. Our runways typically are used pretty balanced. In the summertime, we're finding that, you know, runway 624 is being used predominantly. You'll find that that's the air, that's the runway that JetBlue is flying in on. In the wintertime, it's just the opposite, it's the other runway that's being used. They do try to balance that. We also have a very aggressive fly-friendly program at the airport, and tenants that we have at the airfield and our corporate pilots that come in do follow that. Cape Air and Rettick Shuttle are very good at responding to any comments that we get. At one point in time, 10, 20 years ago, we received over 2,500 noise complaints. We started instituting a new policy for our noise program. That's when the fly-friendly program was implemented. We had lots of conversations with our pilots at the airport about trying to be conscious of their neighbors. The airport is open 24/7. People can fly in at any time of the evening, but we do have, we have identified reductions in nighttime traffic, and we actually see that. We see after 10 o'clock, very rarely do we have flights that are coming in and out. Every once in a while you do. Oftentimes you'll have helicopters that are coming in as medevac flights. So we do work well with a lot of our existing tenants to help reduce that. We also have an online program that is a flight tracking program. Any of the community members, if they heard an aircraft, they can go onto that website, they can take a look at that aircraft, they can look at the flight activity that occurred over their house, they can put their address in and identify what aircraft flew over and when they flew over and how high they were. It's helped us be able to respond to the community quickly, whereas to the point that those 25,000, 2,500 noise complaints that we received, just recently this year, we were down to 50.
Awesome.
So, and 50 calls coming in from, to be honest with you, two residents.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice presentation. Super. All right. Thank you. And now we're going to have a presentation from Chris Kennedy, Mobility Manager, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here. I'd just first like to address the airport. It's exciting to hear, to hear the everything.
You've got to turn your mic on. Push.
Good. Perfect. No, it's okay. Thank you. You can hear me now.
Chris, I'm going to ask you, just delay one more second.
Sure.
You know, counselors need a break. I think what we're going to do is take a two-and-a-half-minute break so that they can really pay attention. I don't want anybody to miss what you're going to say here, because this is very, very exciting, so.
Sure.
We're going to take a two-and-a-half-minute break, okay?[1170.13]
Counselors, if we could come back together, thank you very much. Town manager has something to say to us.
No, I thank you for allowing me, Markell's town manager. I just wanted to take this opportunity to just share real quickly with you. It's kind of like nice pieces of many things we talk about up here regularly. But, you know, I was on the selection committee for Tom Cahill when he was chosen to lead the Cape Cod RTA, and he's really transitioned it to a certainly statewide but nationally recognized regional transit authority. So, you know, I'm so glad I was on that selection committee. And then when I see Chris up here, who's a Barnstable graduate, grew up here in the Mills, looking to move back here, he's telling me when his lease runs out to become a resident, and that Tom selected this young man. It's exactly what we want to see happening in our community. So, welcome, Chris, and thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for the kind words. I'm fortunate to be in the position I am working alongside and for Tom, and I've learned a lot in my time here and being able, fortunate enough to be able to come back and work here on the Cape where I was born and raised. So, thank you, and we're fortunate to have you on our team as well. So, I have the pleasure today to be talking a little bit more about our brand-new, exciting on-demand smartphone app, which is going to be a pilot exclusive to the town of Barnstable here. And that is called CCRTA SmartDart. So, before I get into a little bit more about what SmartDart is, I do want to talk about just a quick overview of what we do provide in terms of service. I'm sure you've seen, and everyone's seen, our buses around Cape Cod, as we have, we provided over 1.6 million trips here within the last year. And that's split up between our main services, one being our fixed route buses, which do serve all 15 towns, and five of which actually leave right out of Hyannis in our transportation center here. So, we really look at Hyannis and Barnstable as our transportation hub here on the Cape. We have three seasonal services as well that are fixed routes, one being the Hyannis Trolley, which we just recently acquired, brand-new, state-of-the-art trolleys, which I'll show here in a moment. But the other service that we also want to briefly talk about is our Dart service, formerly known as our B bus. It's a dial-or-ride, door-to-door transportation service where someone can book 24 hours in advance a pickup at their desired location. It can be from their front door to their desired drop-off location throughout the Cape. So, that's something that we do, those two services are main components of what we provide. And I'm excited here to discuss a little bit of an innovation based off of those services and how we're somewhat enhancing but also revolutionizing our public transit services. So, before I get into the detail of what SmartDart really is, I'd like to talk about the vision that's been instilled under the leadership of Tom here at the Cape Cod RTA. We really focus on two things, really innovation and also improvement. And we constantly look at areas where we can really create a better product and service for our customers around Cape Cod. So, we're constantly figuring out ways better to understand our customer and then provide a better service to the public. So, that's really what was that thought logic, that innovative thought logic, really what went into and gave birth to SmartDart. As many of you are aware, it's a changing transportation landscape and industry here now with the emergence of Uber and Lyft here. Now on Cape Cod, it's grown to prevalence here as of recently. And we, and as well as technology and emerging technologies, that really is paving the way for us to be able to innovate and look to the future here with revolutionizing our transportation. So, it was really that innovative thought logic that gave birth to what we like to call now here as SmartDart. So, what is SmartDart? I like to call it, and I know this is a bold statement, but I like to call it an improved version of Uber and Lyft. And I'll explain here why that's, why we believe that to be the case. It's an, so SmartDart is an on-demand, app-based, shared-ride transportation service, which I'll break that down a little bit further for you. So, on-demand, meaning you can take out your, you'll be able to take out your smartphone and order a on-demand transportation option. And it's a, it's also, there's a shared-ride component, which I'll get into a little bit further, that promotes that shared-ride aspect that's really important to the state of Massachusetts here as of recently. So, with those options being in place, we really, we're looking to innovate in that lens, but we're also really looking at making sure that we provide a superior service to what already exists and not competing with what exists in our public transportation system. So, a little bit more about it, the plan is to have shorter haul trips, not as our longer-haul fixed routes do. And we really are looking, we're going to be starting out in this pilot program with handicap-accessible minivans here, which I can, I'll show you right here, which were our brand-new 2019 state-of-the-art vehicles that do have electric handicap-accessible ramps there. So, we're really looking to provide an efficient service to the public as well. So, this really gave way, it's a fully-funded program by the state that we are, like I said, exclusively deploying here at the outset as a pilot program to the town of Barnstable. So, why do we choose the town of Barnstable? We're really looking at, of course, the population, the population density here, and we really, again, we look at it as the transportation hub of Cape Cod, and it's a really good area for us to really gauge the demand, how we can best deploy this to the rest of Cape Cod, and then grow from there. So, we're working closely with a developer in-house, which is providing us a handful of benefits. And to continue to develop this app, and we are in the very close final stages of developing the application, which we're ready to launch here, I'll talk about in a moment. But, so what puts us, what sets us apart from the Uber and Lyft kind of tech, on-demand technologies, really the affordability of this. So, this is still, remember, is a public transit option that there's a level of affordability. So, with this, our service here would be $3, a fixed cost of $3 for the regular fare, no matter how, no matter the distance, and $1.50 for anyone older than 60, 60 years old, and anyone that has a disability. So, it's an affordable option, as many of you have seen in the town of Barnstable, you can go even five miles, and you can, an Uber and Lyft will cost about $5 to $15 to $20 at some times, and even more at other areas. So, it's important to us to be able to provide an affordable option to our customers. The other added addition is the level of trust that we provide. Our drivers are highly trained, there's over 90 hours of training that goes into, before they get on the road. So, that's an important aspect of what we provide, and it's something that the, our customers, is an added benefit to something similar to Uber and Lyft, where you're getting an independent contractor. So, that's really important to us as well. We do provide our customer service, and our customers are number ones. That's always a really important aspect of what we do, both in our call center as well as our drivers, and our drivers can be trusted, and that's important as we transport passengers. So, the other few benefits is that we're able to integrate this service with the rest of our transit options. It's not something that's a one-off, and that it's something that we'll be able to leverage our existing fixed route longer-haul services, where a customer can free transfer over to our fixed route buses, as well as hopefully integrate it with our other dial-or-ride and Dart options, which are, prior to this, there were a 24-hour book-in-advance service. So, one of the other options is really just all-around. This provides another transit option to our community here in Barnstable, but hopefully in the near future, the rest of Cape Cod. And it's important, as the transportation landscape is changing, is to be able to provide as many options as we can. We really look at this as something that we can enhance the brand of Cape Cod RTA, as in a customer can now, that may not have used public transit prior to this, can now, might be more inclined to use an application and summon one of our vehicles, and potentially, hopefully, transition onto our, rest of our transportation options that we provide. So, I talked a little bit about what SmartDart is, but I also want to, I want to run through a more tangible example with you, so it makes a little bit more sense with some visuals. So, how it works is a passenger will take out their, take out their smartphone, they're able to download our SmartDart application, should be available here soon in the App Store and Google Play Store, able to create an account, log in, and then, as you see here on the right, they're able to choose their location, their desired location for drop-off, designate the amount of passengers onboard, and once they book the trip, what that does is that someone that'll call upon one of our handicap-accessible minivans, that will then be directly rerouted to those passengers. And so, this is what it looks like from the driver perspective. The driver will receive the trip, and it'll be redirected to pick up the passenger, and there, all the while, being trans, their directions will be supplied by Google Maps. And there's a really, there's a complex algorithm that creates efficiency and that really provides as a quick and expedient service for the customer, as opposed to what we had prior, which is still a great service with our Dart. It's something that is more of a last-minute option that we are able to provide here. So, one other aspect, there's really three applications that we've been working on and developing, and the third being, one being the driver application, the passenger application, then our, the dashboard, which our dispatchers have the ability to oversee. They're able to track all the trips that are going on at any given time, make sure everything is going correctly, and then analyze the operations for the day, and going forward, be able to improve and create more efficiency as we move forward. So, some of the other benefits that the RTA does, the RTA, as well as the public, will receive from this, is that we're, our goal is to integrate it with the rest of our service options. So, as to not compete with our longer-haul fixed route options, as what we have seen in the past Uber and Lyft might do with our services, with, we really want to complement them, we provide free transfers onto our fixed route buses, and also have the ability for it to be another option, public transit option. So, another aspect that really is important to us is the shared-ride component, where that has, not only does it benefit, it creates efficiency and lower-cost transportation, it also, we have the ability to, with more vehicles on the, with less resources and more vehicles, we do have the ability to take more cars off the road and therefore reduce greenhouse gas emissions with having less cars in the road. And that's something we look at, transportation system as a whole, is we really look at that shared-ride component, that gets cars off the road and reduces, from an environmental perspective, reduces the emissions, which in the transportation industry, about 40% of the emissions comes from transportation. So, we're always cognizant and focused closely on that. What is really interesting to us and important to us is that this does encourage a brand-new customer, and we hope to our system that may not have taken public transit before. And we can target areas that we don't necessarily have our current fixed route or our buses servicing, we can target those areas to provide new service where there's actually demand in those areas. Again, provide, increasing and enhancing our current service options. So, then there's the, from the technology component, there's a handful of benefits here. It's more of a dispatch-independent service, so there's less the work that goes on in our call center, but we also have the ability to take the technology component, and because we're developing this in-house, we're better able to cater it to our customers, and if we find that there's a changing need, we can develop and move our resources in that direction, because we have that ability to work closely with our in-house developer that we're working closely with. And the other, the other point here that's important is that the, our ability to integrate this with our transit system as a whole over time. So, right now, we're working on deploying this as a pilot program in the town of Barnstable, and it's something that, that within the town of Barnstable will be very useful with the individual vans, but our kind of, our long-term goal for this is envisioned is that this technology will allow our service to be more on-demand and efficient over time. So, able to deploy our Dart buses and use larger vehicle capacity to create a more efficient system. So, over time, we're hoping that this really has the ability to change the system as a whole. So, just briefly in the progress, so there, as I said, we are, we have been developing three brand-new applications from scratch. So, there's a lot of learning, a lot of testing involved, and a lot of time. So, a great team effort in being able to get to where we are. Where we are right now, we've been working on the last stage of our, the last stage of our testing phase. So, next week, we are planning on introducing this to our testing community, which we're working closely with some individuals to figure out where we can best kind of tweak the last little final stages, and then, and then before the unveiling to the Barnstable public as a whole, we want to make sure it's ready to go. We will have, we'll be deploying three vans as we start, and then as we move on, we'll hopefully be able to grow that quickly, quickly after that. So, the exciting part for us is really the future plan and how we can best, we can best deploy this and use this technology, this on-demand and on-demand technology to our advantage and to our customer and population here. So, the important aspect of this is the integration piece, is that we want, and I mentioned this before, is that we have the ability to show on the app that our different transportation services, so they can look into, they can be encouraged to use our transportation after using, after using the SmartDart application or service. And the other two components that I really wanted to touch upon was where the, we wanted to make sure that this technology and this service is also age-friendly, because we do recognize the median age in Barnstable and the rest of Cape Cod is continuing to increase, rise. So, we always were looking at our, in the last two years, we embarked on a older adult initiative where we ended up, there was a handful of projects and programs that came out of it that have been very beneficial, one being the Free Fair Wednesdays, where we're all, anyone 16 and older rides for free in our fixed route buses. We're working closely with the Council on Aging, and we help the councils in supplying vehicles. So, with that in mind, we really want to make sure that someone who may not have a smartphone, or someone who doesn't understand how to use the technology, has the ability to be able to still use this on-demand service. So, kind of a couple of ways we're looking at this, one being that we have the ability to go in and manually book the trip ourselves, so the passenger still has the ability to call our dispatchers and book the trip over the phone. We can do that, we can do that in-house, which is important if someone doesn't have a smartphone, especially in this location, or doesn't understand how to use one. The other interesting aspect, and we're not thrilled with the name of the technology, but a growing company called GoGoGrandparent is what, it's a, it's a service that actually provides, and they work closely with Uber and Lyft, and what they're able to, it's a dispatch service where someone now currently that's looking to use Uber and Lyft can call their phone number, book a trip through them, they monitor the entire trip, and make sure that everything goes well with the passenger, and then continue to provide that service and use them. So, they, we met recently with the co-founder, and that's something that they're able to integrate with our technology, and hopefully here soon, provide an added benefit of also being able to use their service as a dispatching service, and so, again, someone who doesn't have or know how to use a smartphone. And so, the last thing I'll talk about is really important to us is our youth initiative. So, we do, we provide fixed route buses to many of the high schools on Cape Cod, pick-up and drop-off students. We've really put an emphasis on this recently, as of the last handful of years. So, we provide student discount passes, and we also been, we've gone into schools and educated students on how to better use our services. So, this is something, as SmartDart, we see as being a really useful service to our student population here on Cape Cod, and especially for the, for parents, and knowing that if they were to use a on-demand or an application technical such as Uber and Lyft, there's an added benefit with using Cape Cod RTAs, in that our driver, you can trust our drivers to pick and drop off your student from wherever they're going, and they're also understand the technology and have been inclined to use the technology compared to other populations. So, they, we're hoping that they'll be enthused to use this service as well, and we're hoping all around that it generates additional ridership and is something that is beneficial to the community as a whole, as our transportation options continue to grow. So, I'm excited to move on to the current, the next phase of our pilot program, and I'm really appreciative for the time here today. So, thank you, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Chris. Counselors, Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chris, for the presentation, and I commend you and the others involved for the innovative thinking and the initiative. The one turn of phrase you used that struck me was "level of trust" in terms of distinguishing what's being suggested here when compared with Uber and Lyft, and I say that as someone who uses Uber fairly frequently. What's the plan for marketing this service so that people are aware that it's available?
Sure. So, we wanted to, here at the outset, we haven't, we do have a robust marketing campaign ready to deploy, but we want to be careful in the outset, because we are starting our pilot program, it's a pilot program, we're starting with three vehicles, we do plan to ramp that up here soon. But as soon as that we introduce the, we are planning on a social media campaign, we have, we're planning on putting it, radio advertisements out to the public, working closely with the press, and also getting into areas of customers who would actually, who would really benefit from this service. We plan on working closely with the councils on aging as well, and as well as the different schools who would benefit. We have a Paula George, who's worked with many years at the RTA, she's, she's currently a travel trainer, and she's really, really well-equipped to go into the communities and educate the public on how to use a service like this. So, we not only get out of, through the, through the press, and we also, we do plan on getting out and working closely one-on-one with our customers.
Thank you.
Counselor Levecque, please.
A great presentation, Chris. You know, I couldn't help but think if, you know, marketing-wise and stuff, maybe you can get Chris Evans, John Krasinski, and Rachel Dratch Star to do a C-C-A-T-A, SmartDot commercial, and maybe you can get Big Poppy or something like that, maybe Channel 18 Radio. If they're not available, I have done a little commercial work in the past, if you need any help, but, no, in all seriousness, I think it's great that, you know, this is something that we see essential. I know that I've had conversations with people as public transportation, you know, it needs to, and it's always nice when you see the RTA and you see it more and more, and, you know, I know, I have friends that drive, train, and, like you said, it is such a great organization of really kind people that go out of their way to service not only the elderly, but as, you know, children, as you mentioned, but I just, I just see it growing, and I just think it's great, obviously, yourself involved and moving forward, and again, as important it is that we use smartphones on the, but you also give an option for those who don't have access to that. And I see so much technology moving towards, and it's really eliminating a whole market, you know, even, and you're not doing that, you're still sensitive to the fact that there's elderly, the disabled, the people who can't afford a smartphone, that they are able to access this service. And I know you only have three, but I see a lot more moving forward, and again, just great presentation, great that you're here, and I just look forward to seeing it grow and as the opportunity increases. And again, get that word out, you know, and like I said, maybe you can get local access, cable channels to help, and get the word out that way through commercials or whatever it might be. So, great service, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the kind words, and I want to also mention, too, that we do plan on quickly expanding after we, we have the ability to integrate with our current Dart buses, that we have that vehicle capacity there, where we have over 40 vehicles out on the road at any given time there, that we integrate that with that system. We do have the capacity, and we really plan on, as much as we can, some of the ideas there is getting the word out.
You can use that other idea I had with the commercial.
We'll cite you. We'll give you credit.
Thank you. Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. It's very exciting that, you know, you're moving in this direction. I'm just curious on the actual logistics for some of us who live out in the far-flung parts of the town, you know, the long, the bus service is, you know, it's a mile and a half, two miles away, you know, you have to drive to get to the bus. How is it envisioned that this integrates with the long-term or the long-haul, or how does that work?
Sure. So, in those areas that don't have that public transportation, that we do provide those fixed routes that are the longer-haul buses all throughout the Cape, but there are, like you mentioned, pockets and areas that do have, that do have the need for transportation, and that's where we plan and that's where we plan on, this service will have the ability to provide transportation to all those locations. We plan on creatively and logically putting our vehicles, staging our vehicles in certain areas where, where the demand is, and have the ability to then connect to a longer-haul bus. Is this, this will be more of a shorter haul, and it won't be something that can take you from P-Town to Hyannis, but we do have options that exist to get you there. So with, with the, our hope is that that, the SmartDart will be able to get you to that fixed route bus, and the fixture could take you the rest of the way to as close as you can to the destination. And the one aspect I didn't mention, too, is that, in the near future, we're looking to display our fixed route options on the application, so the application can specifically address how to use that next option, the fixed route option, to get to the final destination if it does happen to be a longer-haul trip. And we're not planning on just focusing in the higher-population areas. We do want to look at, and we've, we've had discussions with areas in P-Town and all throughout the Cape, where our buses all throughout the day, they are staged, and they're all throughout the Cape, and those would be the vehicles that would be called upon to be able to more effectively. Right now, with the transport, we're not able to, with our Dart buses are able to get to some of those places, but we, we don't have the, we don't, there's someone that does want a last-minute trip, doesn't have the ability to, we haven't able to track where they're coming from. We are able to track where that demand is and keep our vehicles in those locations.
So since this is conceived as an on-demand service, will you be giving people an estimate of their arrival time based on when they ask for the ride?
That's a great question. So we, so as, when someone orders a trip, similar to what Uber and Lyft will do, our app will tell you what the driver, the license plate, what the vehicle looks like, and it 'll also tell you how long until an estimated arrival time of the vehicle to your location. So it'll say, and it'll also show the location of where the vehicle is, so you have the ability to see how close it is, and then when it's going to arrive.
But will it also project the arrival of where you want to go?
Yeah, so it, so it will say the last possible time that you can get somewhere. With the shared ride component, it's difficult to tell exactly when, but we will be able to say, because there is a cutoff limit that we've built into this, that a passenger will not, won't be in the vehicle past a certain period of time. So it will tell you the last possible time that you will, you will end up getting dropped off. So they'll know that while or before they're booking, booking the trip.
Okay. And then are you going to have this available for what part of the day, or, I mean, how, what are the hours it's going to be available?
So that's, that's still up in discussion. Here at the outset, it'll be around when our, the main part of our service is operating, so between the hours of about 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. But as we move forward, we're able to deploy that in different areas, and if there's a demand earlier in the day, we have the ability to now, we don't, the areas we don't provide transit, and we can focus on those areas and provide a vehicle or two in those areas that we haven't had service before.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Thank you.
Counselor Neary.
Thank you, President Hebert. Chris, thanks for the presentation. Pilot, pilot efforts are always, it's kind of the big question mark, and I think it's important to get them to roll out. I would think that if you have the manpower, it would really behoove you to go and contact local, I mean, you could actually just query it in town, doctor's offices, and you'd get that population that, I mean, we think about, you got to get mom to the doctor type thing, you know, and if her, if she's well enough, you've got the van, and if you could incorporate that into a marketing deal, I would think you'd fill up those three vans all day long, every day, you know? Granted, you've got to get the communication out to the, I would, I would think the medical offices would be like number-one go-to.
Very, I'm happy you mentioned that. So we have been, we've partnered recently very closely with Cape Cod Healthcare, we've been meeting with them regularly, and we've discussed this option as another option to improve access to healthcare. We're looking at another, other options to do so as well. We've been adding fixed route stops at different healthcare locations throughout the Cape, and we have been working very closely with them, and we think that's, that's one of the, that's a really good area for, for the Cape to benefit from a service like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Hebert, and thank you for your presentation. Does your, does this program accommodate someone who become a very enthusiastic fan and maybe take it every day to work?
Yes, no, it, so.
There's no limit on how many times.
Yeah, so, so someone that would be looking for a daily, and they know exactly what time they'd be looking to go somewhere, that's, it's perfect for our Dart system that exists now, where they can book the trip ahead of time, and they can guarantee they'll, they'll have that service every single day and not have to worry about booking it every day. But if there is something where in the afternoon, they know that they might get off at different times of the day, that's something where this service then would come into, would be helpful, is they don't have to rely, I have to leave here at 4:30 because I have, because I booked the trip in advance. This would give them the ability to have that flexibility, and they could use it daily wherever they, they're getting picked up from. Thanks.
Okay. Well said. I'm not ready for the GoGoGrandparent program, but I am, I do have a wireless, but I have no idea if it's a smartphone or what it is, and I have no apps on my phone, so I really appreciate the idea that you would have a phone number, that would work for me. Great. If there's no other questions, thank you. Wonderful presentation, great program. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
You're a wicked smarty pants.
Okay. Thank you. So now, now we have Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, for a presentation. She is here. Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm sorry it's running late, but thank you.
Good evening, Counselors. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Thank you for inviting me tonight to talk about this exciting partnership that we've developed with the RTA, as well as some of our general objectives around downtown Hyannis revitalization and housing production. As many of you know, are one of the hallmarks of our work in planning and development, are our community development efforts focused around the revitalization of downtown Hyannis. We work towards a community vision that was set out when we did our original growth incentive zone back in 2005, to create a livable, year-round community with a great jobs/housing balance, a community that is healthy, walkable, and resilient. And since the theme for our presentations tonight is transportation, you know, I think one of the strengths that we have in this community are our multimodal assets, and when you see them mapped out here, you can really start to imagine some of the potential, really exciting potential, that can come from enhancing the connectivity of these, again, of these transportation assets, and bringing people, again, people year-round and visitors into our downtown community. So one of our, one of our most recent efforts in line with council priorities and really the pressing need in our region and our Commonwealth has been focused on revitalization in ways where we can increase the housing supply in downtown Hyannis. And certainly, there's no one answer to this. A variety of approaches, both regulatory and otherwise, are necessary. But I think when you see, when, when we, we look at the, when we look at the makeup of downtown Hyannis, our approaches, which are mainly focused on retrofitting properties, redeveloping properties, infill development, when you look at our landscape, our physical landscape, you can see it's very built-out, so there's, there's not a lot of opportunity, again, when we're talking about housing development, to find places where infill opportunities are readily available, which is why when Tom Keher and the staff at the Regional Transit Authority came to us and said that they had a concept of looking at some underutilized land on the Transit Authority property to support a housing development, we were, we were thrilled to support and partner with them in that effort and to bring that vision forward. And it actually really provided the foundation for a community partnership that I know you've been, that I've been here to talk to you about before, the Transformative Development Initiative Partnership, that's supported by Mass Development, that really looks at rebuilding the east end of Hyannis, and to be not the end of Hyannis Main Street, but really to reestablish this area from an overlooked crossroads into a gateway in our community, a gateway that welcomes people, connects Main Street, it connects Main Street to the harbor, and reflects the historic neighborhood character and this location as, as the historic center of downtown. So again, working in partnership with the Regional Transit Authority, we helped sort of explore some of the development potential that was, that was on this site. This is the, this is the RTA's Transit Authority site, and start to really dig in to some of the development challenges. There'd been a number of visioning studies around this, and this was really an effort to try to get, you know, get sort of boots on the ground and see, see, see what we could really, what could really be built here, really, again, in support of a potential request for proposals by the RTA, and I'll let, I'll let Tom talk a little bit more about that vision. So what we did was we sort of tested out the development potential of the site. Again, these are entirely conceptual, not necessarily what a developer would build there, but we thought it was important to sort of share, I guess, the scale of development that, that could happen there. We've, you know, we've heard from a number of you, the idea of looking for potential places to, to increase density and have, have housing that could, could be a little bit more dense. So we look at some of these options, and we certainly look at the surrounding character of the neighborhood and the fact that we do have some buildings there that have some height on them, you know, looking at, again, the potential for, for adding, you know, perhaps 40 to 60 units back here on, on just a fraction of this parcel that's highlighted here. And so when we start to look at development and how to get to development, how to get to an RFP, how do we attract a developer to respond to that RFP, one of the, one of the immediate barriers that was identified was our zoning, unfortunately, and again, really why I think Mr. Keher and I see this as a, as a partnership project. So the Transit Authority property is located in the TD, the Transportation District that you see there in the center of the screen. It was really designed, again, by the founders of the, of the growth incentive zone, to be an area that, again, responded to the multimodal needs of our community. Unfortunately, one of the things that the zoning doesn't permit, and I think wasn't envisioned at the time, was housing. So it's, it's not a permitted use in the Transportation District. Again, the Transportation District is, is a little bit of a mismatch of land uses. There are some single-family residential properties there, there's some commercial properties, there's a hotel, a restaurant. I mean, it's an area where, where I think there, there's a lot of potential, but we, as we start to really look at a vision for the future, again, how to sort of integrate it into the surrounding neighborhoods, we see housing, again, playing a pivotal role, again, especially, especially because of the proximity to the transit center and the walkability options that that provides. So we've been talking, again, about potential regulatory solutions, again, that would enable a request for proposals by the RTA. You know, when you put out an RTA, you know, you want, we certainly want to strike a balance. We want a developer who might respond to this to have enough confidence in that RFP to respond to it, that they're going to be able to permit the project that they're, they're responding to. But at the same time, we have, you know, we have a bit of a unique situation where the town has an interest, I think the RTA has an interest, and certainly really wants to be able to control the product that comes out of the other side in terms of quality and, and other factors. So what are the solutions that, that we'd like to put forward for consideration on this? Sort of is a two-part solution that we, that we think solves both those challenges, perhaps entertaining the idea of amending the Transportation District to allow housing. So again, we know, in fact, from a, from a policy perspective, that this is a type of land use that our community would support in this area on these parcels, with the understanding that there are, there are really other development challenges to the site as well. Again, it's a, obviously, you can see by the lot size, very unique, very unique lot, you know, doesn't have frontage how we typically think about it, is in the groundwater protection overlay district, so probably imagining that the ultimate development would probably necessitate a regulatory agreement, again, by the, again, by having both the RTA at the town and the developer as party to that. And again, I know we've been trying to get away from that, that, that more prolonged regulatory process, but in this case, again, because of the unique nature of the site, we do think it's a, it's an appropriate tool here. And again, as you, as you look at the property and start to, you know, start to see how you could potentially start to integrate this site into the Ridgewood neighborhood, we know Housing Assistance Corporation is underway with construction of, an exciting project there. Again, you know, I think this graphic shows the walkability to Main Street, obviously the, the proximity to the Transportation Center, which might warrant some relief under some of our standards for things like parking. Again, a unique parcel that, that again, we think is tailored towards the unique solution of a regulatory agreement. So I think I'll leave it there, except for just to say, I think this is sort of a beginning of a vision for this whole, for this whole Transportation District and this area. You know, I think there, there's the potential to, to make some progress on some longstanding and sort of systematic issues that are present in downtown, things like looking at consolidating our parking and rebuilding infill opportunities on, on Main Street. But I'd like to turn it over to Tom, just to make a few comments on his vision for the RFP, and then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Tom Keher, I'm the administrator of the Cape Cod RTA, and President Hebert, I learned many years ago in public service that brevity is the soul of wit, so I will try to be very brief. We, we have been very excited over the last several years, working closely with the town of Barnstable. None of the things that the RTA has been able to do, we could not have been able to do it without the incredible support that we receive from the town of Barnstable. Elizabeth and her team have been helpful in so many different areas. You know, fortunately, Town Manager Mark Els, and it sounds like mutually admiration society, but he's been on our board since I came to the RTA, and every time we come to him with an innovative idea that impacts Barnstable, he's been very supportive, he wants to understand it, but he supports us, and he's been very, very helpful in terms of identifying resources and the like. So this is an idea we've had for some time, recognizing the shortage of housing and the need for affordable housing. Listening to the testimony earlier this evening, I was thinking, boy, this plays right into what will hopefully address some of the issues you folks have to grapple with. We hope provide in the, in the next, within the next year, certainly, the completion of this project with 50-plus units, multi-family units, rental units, that will make a significant difference, I think, because it's transit-oriented development, it's proximity to transit opportunities. And we've created fixed route that Chris and others have alluded to, that goes to all 15, all 15 Cape Towns on the hour, new technologies that can allow you to get to the fixed route even quicker. So we've now got this comprehensive transportation system in place that people can live there and just walk over and get on a bus, get to Logan or Pointson, anywhere in the country with relatively an easy process. So we're happy that this is going on, kind of an innovative way. We understand the importance and the attention that you folks give to regulatory agreements, but we do think that tool gives us more control of what's going on, to develop the housing in a way that we think will, you know, be tasteful for the village and also complement, not compete with Main Street. So I'm going on and on, but we're excited, couldn't do it without the great help that we've received. Understand that the council will play a role going forward with the, the process and the planning process, and look forward to continuing to work with Elizabeth and her team to make this come to fruition. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. So Counselors, questions, comments, thoughts? Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. Is there a vision at all for mixed use with retail below and, and living space above? I remember years ago seeing some sort of a mock-up of that in that area.
Over the years, we've talked about potential retail, and we've worked with the bid and others to make sure that we complement, not compete. This particular proposal is, it's three stories of housing and parking underneath, three over one, so there's no retail. So there's no retail contemplated in this plan. You know, down the road, the master plan that we've completed, we've talked about potential townhouses on other properties. We have 11 acres over there, but no, there's no retail being considered right now in this particular project.
That's probably something we should look to if we change zoning or, you know, anything like that. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Town Manager Mark Els, thank you.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Just real quickly, Tom, timeframe on the RFP, just so the council knows the immediacy of this discussion?
Well, we have to, we have to get these two matters resolved, the zoning change and all zoning change and the regulatory agreement. Once we have a developer, we'll move forward, but those things have to occur before we put the RFP out. But we're like, we're going to do an RFQ, a request for qualifications, and I'm hopeful by, you know, March, the end of March, very soon. Our motto at the RTA is get to yes, you know? We try to get to yes and do whatever we can to be innovative and get things done. So with the help of this great town, we've been able to get some things done.
Quick question.
Councilor Snapp?
Mr. President. Would the ownership stay with the RTA or is this going to be a transfer of ownership to the developer?
We own, we own and have full control of the parcel that's being developed here, and we're going to enter into a 99-year lease with the developer. That's the plan.
So is this most likely going to be 100% affordable then, if you're going in that direction?
We're going to meet the 10% requirement for affordable. So there will be an affordable aspect, certainly. I think 50 to 60 units is what I've been told is possible there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Dagewen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. At one time, there was talk that the Department of Motor Vehicle was going to move on to the property as well as that. Still viable or is that just still in the working?
Well, that was, thank you for the question. That was something that I really wanted to do because I think it makes sense, you know, that the existing facilities in Yarmouth, there's some parking challenges and traffic challenges there. And I used, at one time, worked for the state and worked closely with the registry, so I thought it would make some sense. And we actually developed and designed, in addition to our existing facility, to put a registry in there. But for one thing or another, the state, the state didn't feel at this time they were prepared to do that. And, you know, Manager Els, Manager Els and I met with the Secretary of Transportation on a couple of occasions. They encouraged us at one point to look at this, but at one point, I finally said, I can't, you know, we get to yes. We weren't getting anywhere, so we kind of abandoned ship on that. But I think the property's 11 acres, there's other facilities nearby and other things that I know Mark has talked about for registry, you know, for registry locations in the future. I think it makes sense. We have the airport, we have the steamship, Highline, all in proximity to our Transportation Center. Exciting things going on in the east end development. We're working closely with that. It would make sense to have the registry here in Hyannis and maybe before I leave, we'll get that done, hopefully.
Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you, Town Manager.
Mark Els, Town Manager, there's an RFP out right now from the state to looking for space for the registry. And we've shared it with local entities, and certainly they're looking to lease space, approximately 10,000 square feet. It's out right now, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If anybody needs a copy of it, I have it. I can certainly share it.
Thank you.
The last thing I'll say, that was the point. There was a question of whether they were going to lease space or whether they were going to own the registry. And we made a very cogent argument, I thought, that they should own it, and we showed ways that could be efficiencies, and I still think they made a mistake in not dealing with us at that time, but now they want to, I think they've decided to lease space. So that's what they're contemplating, and I still think Hyannis makes sense for it. Thank you.
Thank you. We all set? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, great presentation. Awesome. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to ask Vice President Rap Grissette if you would act on the minutes, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Town Council meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2020, as presented.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of, what is it, 2020?
Aye.
Well, set? No one opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commissions, commission reports, and correspondence and announcements, please. Thank you. Councilor Snapp, please.
All right. As promised, I'm going to give you a brief review of the meeting that we had at 5:30 today, where we discussed the plan forward for short-term rental regulations. Staff presented two ordinances, proposed ordinances. One would be a general ordinance. When that, if that goes forward and comes before the council, that will require a majority vote. And the other piece that would be in partnership would be a zoning ordinance, and as you know, that would require a two-thirds vote by the council. The draft proposal for the general ordinance is what we primarily focused on, addressed a number of items to, to address the community's concern about short-term rentals and focusing on health and safety issues, nuisances, and preserving neighborhood character. The idea is that the town would license all rentals going forward. As of right now, there are 601 rentals that have registered with DOR. So this is an issue that is already occurring. You know, we have rentals in our community, and so even though we want to have a thorough and very transparent process, there is also a degree of urgency that we move forward on this as quickly as we can. So in that light, the committee will be, the zoning and regulatory subcommittee will be meeting in two weeks to continue working on the draft based on suggestions that we had at today's meeting. Some of the policy issues that we will need to consider, and the committee will make its recommendation to the full council, have to do with whether we want to establish a minimum night stay, anywhere from three days to a week to, you know, whatever we choose. A question on whether we want to limit licenses. If we are allowing licenses per owner of each unit, you know, do we want to have a cap on that? There's been a lot of concern in the community about investor-owned properties, and we want to make sure we address that there isn't, you know, big heavy hitters that are coming into our community and doing these short-term rentals. The third issue would be whether we want to have, I think, I think we agree that we want to have occupancy requirements and how we define that in the ordinances. So I think, I don't want to spend more time on what we had in our conversation, but the draft, this is a public record, so this would be available to all councilors, right? Who am I looking at? Okay. So those of you who want the draft that we discussed today, that will be made available to anybody who wants to look at it. We did a little reversal in unusual procedure for our meeting tonight. We put public comment at the end, and that seemed to be well-received, and we may try that again at our next meeting. So it gives people an opportunity to respond to the actual work we're doing during the committee, rather than bringing their concerns to the beginning and then sort of having to be stifled as we're proceeding with our discussion.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councilor Cullen, please.
And just as an aside, tonight's meeting was also televised, I believe. So it's in an effort to be more transparent and have it not be just hearsay what was said or minutes or whatever, it was televised. So I think that pretty much covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other committees? Just for sake of communication, just know that we are planning to have a strategic planning workshop in May of this year. That will be on a Saturday. It's not set yet, but we're working on trying to get that organized because I know it's a concern of a number of councilors that we revisit a strategic plan. So that'll be in May. Okay? Anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to move to the orders of the day. If we would, then I'm going to ask Councilor Levecq to read in item number 2020-078, appointments to the board committees or commissions.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business. This is second reading, may be acted upon, majority vote. This is item number 2020-078, appointments to a board committee or commissions. Resolved that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multi-member board committee or commission. This is the Airport Commission, Bradley Bailey of Centerville as a regular member to a term expiring 6/22. Housing Committee, Jacob Dewey of Hyannis as an alternate member to a term expiring June 2021. The Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission. And just to, there's going to be a little bit of a, kind of a reassigning, a realigning that's not on the agenda as written, but Cecilia Carey of Hyannis will be a regular member, holding a board license, real estate license, and her term expires June of 2020. Tim Ferrera of Hyannis as a regular member to a term expiring June of 2020. And David Sorensen of Centerville as a regular member to a term expiring June of 2020. Here we go. Recreation Committee, Commission Timothy Luce of Centerville as a regular member to a term expiring June of 2021. And Shellfish Committee Tyler Hagenstein of Kettuitt as a professional fisheries-trained member to a term expiring June of 2021.
Okay, open to conversation on this by the councilors. Can I just ask a correction? When you said alternate on David Sorensen...
Oh, I'm sorry. Regular member.
Okay, but it is printed down as alternate. I just want to make that note.
Right.
Okay? Scribnezera, okay? Just want to make sure everybody knows that. Any conversation, any discussion?
Questions?
Okay, all those in favor moving the question? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so this is just a majority vote? All those in favor of moving 2020-078? Any affirmative? Please indicate by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. That is unanimous. Thank you.
I abstain with regard to Jacob Dewey.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we have that? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, under new business, I would ask Vice President Rap Grissette to read into the record item number 2020-079.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business, may be acted upon, roll call, majority vote. Item 2020-079, transfer order in the amount of $60,000 to the fund, to fund the personnel costs and associated operating costs, expenses of the new communications director position in the Town Manager's Office, as presented.
Thank you very much. And we have Manager Mark Els to speak on this.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. We continue to progress with the internal reorganization of our existing workforce and created a Director of Communications position and supporting staff under the direct oversight of the Town Manager's Office. The primary role of this position includes being responsible for managing and directing our organization's internal and external communication efforts. This position, in coordination with the Town Manager, will supervise public relations, create communication strategy, and may serve as primary media contact for the organization when appropriate. The fiscal year 2020 operating budget for the Town Manager's Department did not include funding for this position. Vacancy savings created from personnel turnover within the Planning and Development Department will be used to fund the salary and associated operating expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. Salary costs are expected to be $55,200 and $4,800 will be provided for operating expenses. An administrative code change will be brought forward as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget development for the restructuring of the Town Manager's Department to include the communications program. Any answer, any questions you may have relevant to this request?
Thank you, Mark. Councilors, any questions, comments? Councilor Cullen, please.
Yes, thank you. Just one quick question. Is the position in planning going to be refilled or are we eliminating the position that was?
We are reorganizing within planning as well, so we will take a vacant position and not refill it as it previously existed. Those responsibilities have already been reassigned, reallocated to existing positions within planning.
Okay, we just want, I just have a concern that we're keeping our pedal, the pedal to the metal on economic development is...
We are.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Yes, Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. Do you anticipate this to be inside, someone who's currently working for the town?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
I'll address that momentarily.
All those in favor of moving the question, indicate by saying aye, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
As of tomorrow, we have done the...
We haven't voted?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's right, I better wait for that.
So we're moving the question, right? So all those in favor of passing item number 2020-079, please indicate by raising your hand, saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, it's roll call, sorry. All right. It's not on my cheat sheet here. Madam, it's down there. Madam President, please. I'm Madam Clerk.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagewen?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levecq?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Thank you. As of tomorrow, we have already gone through the interview process internally, and Lynn Poyant will assume the role of Director of Communications. Thank you.
As I say in the restaurant business, excellent choice. Okay, so we're going to please move to item number, I'm going to ask Councilor Gordon Starr to read into the record item number 2020-080 to refer to a public hearing.
This is new business to be referred to a public hearing. Item 2020-080, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $220,860 pursuant to temporary repairs to private roads program for certain private roads regarding Goodview Way in Barnstable Village.
I have a first, we have a second. All those in favor of item number 2020-080 to be moved to a public hearing on February 27th, 2020, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next regular scheduled meeting is February 27th, 2020. Unless there's any new business, can somebody...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Have a good night, safe travels home.